Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Whether you're here, we've got a good crowd, or watching, we appreciate your participating. So we call the meeting to order. And Councilman Chulo, if you'll please do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, unlike so many countries in the world, we are blessed for this opportunity to share disparate opinions, debate and discuss them, and come to an agreement on the best outcome for our community. There's far too much divisiveness around the world. Please allow us to choose our words tonight, and always carefully, respectfully, and professionally. We're thankful for all you have given us, including the courage to make the right decisions tonight for our community. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we begin tonight with a public hearing, which is a, and action, which is a quasi-judicial hearing for a special use permit for a single-family, large dwelling in the R7 medium-density residential district located at 6963 Kings Lynn Drive. Ms. Eads?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since this is a special use permit, it will need to be conducted as a quasi-judicial hearing. The applicant is entitled to a fair and impartial decision-making body, which means you're required to base your vote solely on the competent substantial, and forgive my voice tonight, and relevant evidence produced during this hearing. I need to ask the council as a whole a few questions to ensure your impartiality. Does anyone have a financial interest in this application?
No.
Okay. Does anyone have a close business or familiar relationship with the applicant?
No.
No.
I am sure you are all aware of where this property is located, but has anyone made a site visit solely to assess this application?
No.
Has anyone had any conversations outside of the context of this hearing with the applicant?
No.
Has anyone had any conversations with any staff members about the substance of this application outside this hearing? Can any of you think of any reason why you cannot be fair and impartial and base your vote solely on the competent material and relevant evidence tonight?
No.
We will follow somewhat the rules of court, but it's, this is not a courtroom. All those who wish to provide testimony must first be sworn in. They will be subject to both questions from the board, as well as questions, cross-examination from any opposing side. We'll proceed with hearing from staff first, then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we will hear from any other party who has standing. The applicant has the burden of proof. They must prove through competent material and substantial evidence that their application meets the criteria found, and this is all in the agenda packet, in section 4.9.61 through 4.9.3.64 in the code. And since this is a large house, in excess, 4,000 feet or in excess of that, must meet the supplemental regulations found at section 7.2.7.1, or excuse me, through 7.27.12. Any questions before we proceed, Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
I believe the applicant's represented by Mr. Richardson out of New Hanover County. And who's going to present for staff? We'll hear from Mr. Kirkland. Yeah. Thank you. Lisa, do you want him to just stand up, or you want him to come to you?
I think I'm going to. You saw Mr. Richardson when he gave to the town attorney during his hearing. It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope he got.
Good evening, Councilmen Johnson. I'm Brian mentioned for hearing tonight, a complicated case of a hearing for a special use permit for a close-classed home in a dwelling, single-family, large, in 6963 Kings Lynn Drive. Andy, represented by Grady Richardson, has applied for the special use permit. The parcel ID number for this in the Brunson County tax record is 233OB00506. Just a brief aerial overview of the site. The site has that little red pin in the center and is highlighted in teal color. You can see the surrounding property zoning of R7, and that this is a vacant parcel. You can also see Kings Lynn curving out, out there as well. So I'm going to run through your special use permit standards, and as well as supplemental regulations that the applicant will need to prove before you're here tonight. As Brian mentioned, the applicant has the burden of proof in producing competent substantial evidence tending to establish the facts and conditions. Those standards are, first, that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved by the issuance of the special use permit. Two, that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Three, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property, or that the use is a public necessity. And then four, that the location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and in general conformity with the land use plan. We do have several supplemental regulations that the applicant has to meet as well. Once again, this is defined as a dwelling, single-family, large, which is anything with a maximum square footage of 4,000 square feet or greater. The standards that they have to meet is that, once again, does not materially endanger the public health or safety, complies with all the required conditions and specifications, will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining property, and will be in harmony with the comprehensive plan. A couple of technical specifications as well, when six or more parking spaces are required, that adequate ingress, ingress of 12 feet in width shall be required. That if utility infrastructure is not adequate, the owner shall install such utilities as needed. That the applicant may provide documentation detailing the effects of the project on surrounding adjacent property values if desired, or if the decision-making board determines it necessary. That adequate lighting must be provided that is in compliance with Article 10 Part 4 of the lighting ordinance. That they'll provide screening for garbage and recycling containers under the house, screened from the street and the outside. The water and sewer approvals must be furnished to the UDO administrator prior to the issuance of a development permit and building permit. That side yard setbacks shall be 10 feet, and that houses of 4,000 heated or cooled square feet or greater can only be built on lots greater than 13,000 square feet of buildable area. That's all I have for you tonight. Once again, the applicant is here to present their case. We've also got Brady Golden, Planner 1 with the department, if you have any technical zoning questions, and Courtney Milliron, who's our CAMA/Flow Plan Administrator here, if you have any CAMA or flood-related questions as well.
Council, do you have questions of that?
Housekeeping. Mr. Kirkland, it looks like pages four through 25 of the agenda packet pertain to this application.
That's correct.
Would you like to introduce that as Exhibit 1?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson, any objections?
No.
Madam Mayor, recommend we accept pages four through 25 of the agenda packet into evidence as Exhibit 1 without objection?
No objections.
So admitted? Okay.
Council, are there any questions of that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may. Mr. Kirkland, the original application was submitted in 2022, correct?
Yes, sir.
And since then, the UDO has undergone changes. Have all the changes to the UDO been applied to this permit request?
Yes, sir. We've, we have reviewed this for the technical standards. Once again, the council has the burden of looking at the discretionary standards for a special use permit. Once again, we've had our planning staff review this for the technical specs of the zoning ordinance, and as far as our evaluation goes, it meets all of those requirements.
So it meets all existing standards, supplemental and code, correct?
Outside of the discretionary standards that we cannot determine as staff, sir.
And have you reviewed this application for fidelity to the original submission? Is it the same submission?
Uh...
Or are there changes?
Right. The floor plan has changed based on the 2022, the driveway configuration and parking configuration have changed. That being said, this is a brand-new application. So the, the standards that the applicant has to prove is that this submittal meets the requirements of the ordinance, not compared back to the one that was approved in 2022, because that's expired, that 2022 approval is not material to this particular request.
Understood, but nonetheless, as we consider the current application, it seems to me it would be edifying to know what has changed from 2022 to '24 in the submission. So what I hear you saying is parking has changed, correct?
The parking layout has changed, the building layout has changed as well, as well as the driveway configuration. There's also some architectural changes to the outside of the building as well. Yes, sir.
Have the number of parking spaces changed?
I haven't evaluated it for the difference in the parking spaces. I can say that, based on our review, the parking that they have in their current application meets the required parking of our Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Matt, to follow up on Councilman's Box question on parking, it says on page nine, overflow parking, if required, can be accommodated on the private road of the subdivision. Is that in compliance with the town's statutes and...
So what, what the town looks at is, do you meet the minimum parking requirement on your site? We don't evaluate statements of overflow parking or anything like that. What we look at is, you have a standard criteria for minimum parking, do you have that amount on your site?
And I understand they have that amount on their site.
That's right.
But if, in their statement, if there is a need for overflow parking, it will be on a public road?
Not if it's within our, not if it's not in compliance with our parking ordinance in the town, no, we wouldn't. I mean, you can't park seasonally in the right-of-way anyway, so no, that wouldn't be an option.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Matt, if I could ask you to go back to slide number two, which is the GIS overlay?
Oh, there we go.
So if I'm, help me understand this. So it appears to me that the lot, which is in green, is that correct?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. So it appears to me, and I'm, I don't, I'm an expert in topographical maps, but it appears that that property line crosses over the sand, the walkway, to go from the parking lot to the south side of the point, and actually extends into the water. Is that correct?
I'm a little bit, the, what, sorry. Are you talking, can you turn around and look at the screen so we can all see what, are you talking about this walkway right here?
No, just keep going. Nope, the other way.
Oh, go this way?
Okay. So that's a walkway. See those people that are standing there? That's a walkway. And that's how they get from the parking lot to the south side of the, of the beach. It appears, if this is accurate, then that property, in fact, is on, covers the walkway, and that walkway therefore is no longer an egress for people that are walking. Is that accurate?
So if this is not public trust beach, then it's an individual property owner. We'd have to look at whether or not that's actually a part of this piece of property or a public trust beach. That's not something that, that's a legal question that would go beyond the capabilities of, of me to look at, as to whether this particular piece of property right here is owned by the entity that's asking you for a special use permit, or is part of a public trust beach access. That's a question of ownership that staff can't really answer.
So do, do we have any aerial photographs or aerial video that's superimposed so we can get a, an accurate depiction to make sure, because we don't want to be off on this one, to make sure that we're right on this one?
Right. The, the best you could do is probably ask the applicant for some additional detail or information related to the, the survey of the property, because the only one who can legally locate the property lines would be a registered surveyor from North Carolina.
Okay. Let me go back to Mr. Eads, if I may. So Mr. Eads, if the property line incorporates the walkway, which is your generally accepted walkway, for tourists, residents, guests to walk over, cross over to the south side of the beach, the beachfront, if that's in fact, if that belongs to the applicant and is on his land, will we potentially lose that egress? Will occupants, any visitors, will they lose that, potentially lose that egress?
If it's, well, when you say walkway, are you, do you mean where, area where people walk? It doesn't look like there's a physical structure on there.
No, there's a piece, there's sand. So in high tide, it's probably a foot wide, in low tide, it's probably eight feet wide. So that's how people...
I will tell you what the law is in North Carolina. I, I don't want to... The ocean beaches of North Carolina include the dry sand beach, not just beneath me in high water. That is open to the public to, to walk back and forth on. It appears to me, and I have not done any surveys myself, I don't know that I've ever actually physically walked out there, but if you're talking about where those people are walking, can you somewhat, can you shine something up there?
I can get a little laser pointer up there.
To the left there, is that the...
I think you saw him at, where these people are right here.
That appears to be what, I think it's NC General Statute 77-20 defines as an ocean beach in North Carolina, which is open to the public to walk back and forth. Now, could, could the town or the public put a structure out there? No. And if it's open beaches of North Carolina, and I welcome Mr. Richardson to chime in on this when he gets a chance to speak, nor could the property owner wall that off and try to make it, you can't wall off ocean beaches in North Carolina. And it looks like the first line of vegetation or the storm trash line, we ought to get Don York to swear in from Moffett Nichols. Best guess is that that is part of the ocean beaches of North Carolina, and therefore couldn't be walled off.
Are you able to state that unequivocally tonight, Mr. Eads?
I've not done any surveys out there, so no, I can't. I, I'd love to hear from the applicant if they care to opine on that. But if it's, but if it's private property, I guess I'm trying to figure out the underpinning of the question. Is your question, if you were to grant this SGP, would that stop that historical pedestrian access there?
Yes. Could there potentially be, not necessarily a physical structure, but some sort of vegetation or something put in there that would restrict access for people that are, that want to use that walkway that they've been using for years?
We can get Ms. Milliron, since that's a CAMA area to...
I'm sorry.
We can get Ms. Milliron, who's our CAMA permit officer, to talk about that, since that's a CAMA area of concern.
Okay.
Courtney, you want to come up and talk about what, if anything, based on CAMA regulations could, I suppose, north of this escarpment here?
To my knowledge, no structures of any type would be permitted in that area. The main reason being is that it would be seaward of the first line of vegetation, which is right along that escarpment there. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to. I will say as well that on page 10, or I'm sorry, 11, on the survey, the escarpment is delineated on there, as well as the first line of vegetation, and that does give you a better idea of exactly where that is in relation to the proposed development, better than the aerial.
And going back to 7720 and the ocean beaches of North Carolina, that's generally the first toe of the frontal dune, if there is one, storm trash line, if there's not one, not a dune, and escarpment line, if there's an escarpment from a storm, or the first line of vegetation. So I, I would contend, based on what Courtney just said, that that is considered open beaches in North Carolina. The applicant certainly has the right to address that in further detail.
Mr. Eads, could the town ask for an easement to ensure future access to that pathway that goes from the west end to an area that serves more like a bay? It's part of the, it's just off of the ICW.
You could ask for it. I don't think you can mandate it. Again, I don't think that you would need it if it's on the ocean beaches. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
I will say as well that when I was reviewing the CAMA minor permit for this proposal, I did send it to the Division of Coastal Management for their review. They did declare that area adjacent to the inlet as inlet hazard area, which is also considered betrant portions. So that's the rules that it would follow going forward.
We would just want to prevent someone from putting no trespassing signs there that would prevent people from moving from one side of the west point, of the west end to the other.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for either Mr. Kirkland or Ms. Milliron. The, the survey that is in our packet on, I think it's page 11, has a date of June the 2nd, 2024. As part of our, as part of the storm last week, several folks were sending out aerial photos. In fact, our drone operator may have even captured some, I'm not sure. But that area of the point looks considerably different than it probably did on June the 2nd. So how does the town rectify this survey as being current if there have actually been topographical changes to that area since the date this survey was done?
So I did go out right before the storm, and then right after, to look at this area, as well as others on the beachfront, to observe any changes to the first line of vegetation. On the inlet side for this particular property, and I do have photos that I can give you all, there weren't any noticeable changes that would require them to get a new flagging for their vegetation.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question. Matt?
And I, I've listened intensely, and I think I have the answer to my earlier question. This is a private road which is not patrolled or enforced by our police department for overflow parking. Is that correct?
This is a private road. I'd have to defer to the police department as to whether it's patrolled for parking violations or anything like that. But once again, the...
So the town cannot tell someone they cannot park on that private road?
Once again, I'd have to defer to the ordinance and the police department that actually enforces that ordinance. What I can tell you, sir, is that this meets the minimum parking requirement under our Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay. And tell me one other real, real easy thing. On your slide number one, there are five other existing houses. Are they all single, large family?
I believe the applicant had some testimony related to that, that they testified in the packet material that you have, that the house beside it is over 5,000 square feet. Could certainly pull additional square footage data for some of those adjacent houses if the town council requested it.
Mark, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
Matt, a follow-up question, if I could, with respect to the parking spot. So refresh my memory, if you, if you wouldn't mind, is what, what is our requirement for parking spots? So a 10-bedroom home, what, what is our parking?
It's one space, it's one space for every habitable room minus one. Okay. Had to look at my technical people over there to make sure I got that one right. So for a 10-bedroom home with...
Ten habitable space.
If there was 10 habitable spaces, you would have nine. If there was 11 habitable spaces, you would have 10, et cetera. Just so the number of habitable spaces minus one is the requirement.
So in this situation, what was, what's the number of parking spots?
It's on page...
Please.
15 is the parking spaces they've denoted, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 parking spaces that they've shown. Also, room for an additional space on the southern parking area that they don't denote, but certainly it meets our requirements for, our dimensional requirements for a parking space there. 11 shown with room for 12 or 13 total.
And those are full-size vehicles, not compact?
Yes, ma'am. They meet our minimum spaces. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that, Mark? Matt, I didn't hear that.
I said they meet our minimum dimensions. Yes.
The mix of full-size and compact?
These appear to be all full-size, sir. I don't believe there's any compact spaces. I'm sure the applicant can clarify that if there's any need to. It's nine by 18 on page 16 of your agenda packet, which is a full-size space, and they're
So I do have one question, Matt. So when you want to pull, put in a pool or do something in the CAMA permitted area, and I may not be saying this technically correctly, but they have to get a riparian permission from neighbors immediately adjacent. So is there anything in our ordinances similar to that? What's concerning for me is the overflow parking, since that was really one of the number-one objections that people had about parking anywhere on the roads. So I would, I would be concerned, where I have no issues, which seems to be a beautiful home, but I would be concerned about the rights of the neighbors with overflow parking and the ability for our ladder trucks, since they're large houses, and the height of which probably is maximal. I'd be concerned that if there were people parked on both sides of the road, that a ladder truck couldn't get through in the event of a fire. So the access for emergency services and the impact on neighbors for overflow parking, which would tell you, you know, that's anything over 12 or 13, however many spaces you, you identified. So I'd at least like for that to be a consideration, and I don't know, since it's a private road, what we can do other than ask for a condition. But I don't know that we've actually evaluated that for parking, since he identifies parking, and I appreciate that, so you didn't have to tell us about the overflow parking. But there is a potential safety issue that I'd like to have assurance that that wouldn't occur if there were parking on both sides of the road.
Absolutely. Yeah, like you mentioned, there may not be, from a parking ordinance standpoint, like I said, I don't know how the, the police applies that on this particular street. I know that I can only speak from my own personal experience, from posting a sign down there, that if you park at the end, people will tell you, you're not supposed to park there, and you should move. But yes, ma'am, I understand your point.
Madam Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask both of our chiefs to get sworn in and ask these questions of them?
You're welcome to. I don't know that they've evaluated it from that perspective, but you're certainly welcome to do that.
Before we do that, and dismiss or relieve Mr. Kirkland, so Councilman Kraft raised the point, is you are persuaded, based on the evidence that you have, that this house will be consistent, consonant with the other houses that are there. Is that correct? Did I hear you say that?
No, sir. I said it's consistent with our technical specifications of the ordinance. He asked if there was any similar houses in the area, and I said that the applicant's information was that the adjacent house was in the neighborhood of 5,000 square feet, and that if you wanted to know square footage of adjacent properties or, you know, properties in the general area, I'd be happy to pull that for you as well.
I'm just asking for, and I think you're providing it, confirmation that it would be in harmony with and therefore compatible with houses nearby in terms of size.
That's the applicant's information that they've provided.
He's gonna, he will provide that again?
But staff does not review applications for harmony. That's the council's charge.
Fair enough. One last point before I let you go, and I've asked repeatedly to have in a consolidated place what I would call an impact statement. And so we've made some strides, so I, there's, traffic is addressed, stormwater, lighting. We've spent some time talking about parking, solar, water setbacks, obviously. Environmental has not really gotten a lot of attention, but vegetative screen. But I would urge you to add, in light of the questions that came up tonight, potential impacts on public thoroughfares, public facilities, for other projects that come forward, that that would be something that, hopefully you could consolidate that in a list, so we could just see it right away. These are the potential impacts of this structure.
Yeah, what would need to happen for something like that to occur is for a council to amend the requirements of application of the ordinance, so that the applicant could be on notice that they should be submitting this information as well. But if that's something that council wants to discuss further, you know, we can certainly help you guys work out a text amendment for something like that.
I think the consolidation of the information would make our task a lot easier, we could see it. And some of the questions that we're asking, leading to discovery, would be presented to us at the front end, right? So this property is near a known public walkway, it does not interfere with it, it's consistent with riparian rights and so on. That would be helpful. So too with parking down the list. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Matt, along those lines, if you would, in the future, since we're not allowed to visit the site, it would be helpful if, when looking at diagrams like this, if you would include this square footage of adjacent homes or homes in the neighborhood, so that council has the advantage of evaluating for whether or not something is consistent. So any information you can give us in that regard, we're not allowed to seek it ourselves and are dependent upon you, so if you could include that in future requests.
Yeah, and anytime, if we're in a meeting like this and you need additional information, we can certainly bring that back to you. You can ask the applicant for that information as well. So if there's something that you need in order to help make a decision, you know, we'll certainly work on that for you.
Well, I guess what I'm asking for is to, as John suggested, to anticipate. So rather than, I wouldn't want Mr. Gandhi, who's already been here a couple of times, to have to come back. If we can anticipate, there's information that would assist council in making a decision. That's, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Matt, one question about, I'm trying to get this math right, and I like to think that math is my area of expertise, but I just can't jive on the parking spots. So if we've got 10 bedrooms, we've got one parking spot for each habitable room, right? And that's 11 parking spots. That means there's only, there's 12 habitable rooms. So we've got 10 bedrooms, are we to understand there's only an additional two habitable rooms that will generate 11 parking spots?
That's my understanding, yes, sir. If you look on the, let's see, there's four plans on pages 19 and 19. So the, that includes the room type and shows that there is, in addition to the bedrooms, a living room and then a dining room, kitchen. And he's got, designed in here at the bottom of the diagram on page 18, a bowling alley. You'd probably have a hard time habitating a bowling alley, but certainly, yes, sir, that's, if we see 10 bedrooms plus a living room, and the rest is for eating or food preparation. Bathrooms don't count, kitchens don't count, things of that nature.
Okay, dining room, living room, 10 bedrooms is 12, minus one is 11. Is that the way the math works? Thank you very much.
The kitchen count.
Any other questions from the council?
Not at this time. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Ross, Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Welcome back, Mr. Gandhi and Mr. Richardson.
I'm Grady Richardson, and I represent Kuntal Gandhi and his LLC that's the applicant before you tonight. And Mr. Kirkland, just to reiterate, you, in your position with the Town of Oak Island, reviewed my client's application, and you found it to meet all the technical requirements for a special use permit under the Town of Oak Island's Unified Development Ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Did everybody hear that? Here. Do we have another?
We got one. Yes, sir.
And are you aware that my client received a Kama permit for his project?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything incomplete regarding my client's application for the special use permit before council tonight?
No, sir.
And with respect to the road that serves my client's lot, is that section of Kings Lynn Drive a private road or a town-owned road?
It's a private road, to my knowledge, sir.
And there's a parking lot, I believe, on the other side of Kings Lynn, and I'm going to try to get the bearings correct. Believe there is a public parking lot on the western side of the private Kings Lynn Drive segment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And from that public parking lot, folks are able to access through the two dirt paths on the slide number two to the dry sand beach. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. I don't have any other questions for you at this time.
Thank you.
May I address any questions of council before I put on some evidence, which will include, in advance, I took the time to pull the aerial images, as well as the Brunswick County tax records, for the heated square footage of the homes that are in the immediate vicinity and within the point subdivision, which I'll be prepared to go over with Mr. Gandhi. But are there any questions I can address for council with respect to the beach access that was asked earlier? Because along with Mr. Eads, I've had a ton of experience with public trust rights and accessibility for the public, and I'm happy to provide any clarity if you still have any questions. Mr. Gandhi, if you'll come up here, please.
Good evening, town council members.
Mr. Gandhi, my understanding is, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but in looking at the slide that's on the screen, the home that is immediately adjacent to your lot, are you aware of how many bedrooms are in that home?
I think it's a 12-bedroom home, 5,000 square feet.
Have you ever had any issues with parking and usage of that home with respect to your lot?
No.
And do you own a house within the point subdivision that's already built?
Yes.
And what is the address of that home?
6955 Kings Lynn Drive.
And in advance today, did I go and prepare an aerial overview that looks similar to the one on, on the screen right now in front of council with respect to the homes that are there in relation to your lot, sir?
Yes, so there are basically six lots in this subdivision, and 6953 is the first lot in that subdivision.
Right. But in advance of the day, did I prepare this aerial image that shows the homes that are on there, and also shows a computation in summary fashion of the, of the heated square footage of the homes that have already been built on lots 1, 2, 3, and 5 in the point subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And attached to that summary, do you see the Brunswick County real estate tax records for each of those lots and properties?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I would mark as Exhibit 2, the compilation of the Brunswick County tax records that show the heated square footage, as well as the aerial image. I'll mark that as Exhibit 2.
Could you show that to Mr. Kirkland first?
Sure.
Before you introduce it. Kirkland, after you've had a chance to review it, let me know if you have any objections on behalf of the staff.
Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept Exhibit 2 offered by the applicant in evidence without any objections.
I'll wait until it's passed around to go through this with council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, would you give Madam Mayor's nonaffirmative position?
I said no objection.
Yes, she said it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm good. Thank you.
Members of council, in front of you is what Mr. Gandhi just identified and has been moved into the record as Exhibit 2. This shows the aerial images and the homes we've labeled as 5, 3, 2, and 1. The square footage that we have is verified by the corresponding pages of Exhibit 2. For instance, for Lot 5, on the next page, you'll see that it has heated area of square footage of 5278 square feet, which is about 300 square feet more than what Mr. Gandhi's application is proposing. On the next page, you'll see, for Lot 3, heated square footage of 4,088 square feet. For Lot 2, you'll see that it's a heated area of 4,848 square feet, and that's Mr. Gandhi's home that he also owns. And then finally, for Lot 1, you'll see the heated area square footage of 4,992 square feet. I will represent to you that those figures are slightly less than the EFF square footage, which is actually higher for each one of the corresponding homes, but I wanted to just limit it to heated square footage rather than usable square footage. And so those are true heated square footage numbers, and as you can see, they're in line with what Mr. Gandhi's application is for, before you tonight, for the special use permit. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
I do, Mr. Richardson. We may have to ask Mr. Edwards to weigh in on this, but council has been made to understand that we don't use county heated square footages for identifying the size of our homes. So it's hard to compare.
What else are you supposed to use?
I would defer to Mr. Edwards on that.
Come on up if you-
Have you been sworn in, Steve?
Dean of council, Steve Edwards. The tax records don't always identify the correct heated square footage. There's errors in the process when they collect their data. Sometimes they just look at the outside parameters and figure how many floors there are and multiply them. But we do have most of the data for the homes that are on that property. I'm sorry, we should have all the data on those homes for that property, for all the homes in that area. The Ocean 12 is the one that's directly adjacent to the lot in question, and that 4,992 square feet that he's mentioned, I do believe is accurate, and that that was actually calculated by a architectural, an architect.
You're talking about this one?
That one, yes. Yeah, that's, that's incorrect. That one, that house was actually built when they first changed the ordinance to 5,000 square feet as a maximum square footage, without having to have a special use permit, and it came just under 4,998 or 4,900 and some square feet. And I do have that data downstairs.
So can you confirm, then, that the other three lots, Lot 2, Lot 3, and Lot 5, that the numbers the town has are the same as the numbers provided by the applicant?
I would like to review those and compare, but they are large homes in that area. During the 2022 SUP, I did do some analysis of the large homes in that area, and there are, I think, 36 large homes that range in that area between 3,000 and the 5,000-square-foot range.
I'm just reluctant to accept this into evidence, which sounds like we already have, if the town has numbers that aren't the same as these numbers, and we have a discrepancy.
I would have to look at them each individually to verify that. But I did, like I said, I don't rely on tax information. My neighbors was wrong. I did calculations for her, got her square footage lower, so sometimes they have higher numbers, sometimes they have lower numbers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Edwards, would you be able to go check that while we're in the process of doing this? Would you be able to go check your data? Thank you.
Do you need a copy of Exhibit 2, so you can compare apples to apples?
Here you go. I've got one for you. All right. Mr. Gandhi, have you received your Kama minor development permit for constructing the home? Any question?
That is correct.
Okay. And is a copy of your permit, what I'm showing here, that was signed by Courtney Milleron, the Kama local permit official that spoke earlier?
Yes.
And is everything with respect to your permit ready to go for you to build this home, subject only to obtaining a special use permit from the town?
That is correct.
May I call Ms., I'm going to butcher your name, Milleron? Ms. Milleron, good evening. Is it true that my client has received a Kama minor development permit to build the subject home on his property that's in question tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
And is the, has the Kama, have you and Kama officials reviewed the site plan and the survey to ensure that it meets the Coastal Area Management Act rules and regulations for development?
Yes, that's correct.
And is the only thing that remains a contingency, other than fulfilling the other requirements, is obtaining the special use permit from the Town of Oak Island?
Yes, that's correct.
And does this appear to be a true and accurate copy of the Kama minor development permit that you signed?
Yes.
I mistakenly thought that this permit was part of the agenda packet materials, and I've only got one copy, but I would identify this as Exhibit 3 and just pass it to council, if that's okay?
If you'd like, I'm sure we can get copies made.
Okay.
Mr. Golden, can you? I'm volunteering some- I'm volunteering, someone will make copies.
Thank you.
Are they going to slow you up? Mr. Richardson, do you want us to keep going?
No, I'll keep going. Thank you. Mr. Gandhi, while those copies are being made, with respect to applying for your KAMA Minor Development Permit on your lot, were you required to give notices to the adjacent property owners in the area?
That's correct.
And did you do so?
Yes.
Did you receive any objections to your KAMA Minor Development Permit application?
No.
Have you received any objections from anyone regarding your desired special use permit for the lot in question?
No.
Mr. Gandhi, do you have any intentions of obstructing anyone's access over public trust beaches relative to your lot?
No.
And does the packet of materials, sir, accurately reflect the surveys you were required to get in connection with your application for a KAMA Minor Development Permit?
Yes.
And do the renderings and drawings of the home you desire to build, are those accurate that are set forth in Exhibit 1 to the town's agenda packet tonight?
Yes.
At this time, based upon what you'll receive, which is Exhibit 3, the KAMA Minor Development Permit, Exhibit 2, and Exhibit 1, on behalf of Mr. Gandhi, we would ask Town Council respectfully for the issuance of the special use permit. We meet all of your technical specifications and requirements. I'm sure Mr. Edwards, when he returns, will give the data points on the heated square footage of the homes on lots 3, 2, and 1. He's already talked about Lot 5. So you've heard, without any dispute, Mr. Kirkland testified that our application meets all the technical specifications and requirements of the town's UDO for a special use permit. And it is in harmony with the surrounding areas, including the home immediately adjacent to the east of Mr. Gandhi's lot. And we would request that the application for a special use permit be granted. Do you have any questions for me or Mr. Gandhi at this point while we await for Mr. Edwards to return?
Counsel?
I do, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, this is for Mr. Gandhi. In your prior appearance, when you appealed for an extension, you mentioned that you intended to use this as your residence, although at certain points, you reserved the right to rent it. Looking at the tax data, three of the four properties you gave us are LLCs. They're clearly commercial in nature. Do you intend to reside in this structure?
You intend to reside?
Yes.
In the house that's about to be built?
Yes.
Thank you.
Easy question, Mr. Gandhi. How long had you owned this property?
That's a difficult question, actually. I would say around 3, 3 and 1/2, 2 to 4 years back, I think. I know my permit expired 2 years back, so I'm assuming somewhere between 2 to 3 years back.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept the KAMA permit as Exhibit 3. It is received.
I suppose what I would say is, in the interest of time, while Mr. Edwards is collecting the data points, I'm unaware of anyone having signed up to speak in opposition to it, but we can concede the floor at this point. If there's someone who wishes to speak with respect to the application, and then I can take it from there.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mark.
So you agreed to have the rendering and the lighting specifications submitted as evidence this evening?
Mm-hmm.
So is it my understanding that your client would be willing to agree to accept those as a condition of building? In other words, the rendition shows like hardy plank siding and the location of glass windows? And then the lighting plan, you would commit to following that lighting plan as a part of your condition?
So I would say, answer on the lighting.
Yes.
I think the lighting is a technical specification that's required, so he's satisfied that. In terms of the architectural or subjective artistic renderings, I don't believe that that is legally appropriate, but he may be willing to stipulate to that design. And I'll just defer to him if he's willing to so stipulate. You don't have to, but if you're willing to stipulate to the architectural rendering that you've submitted as part of your application to build that, then you may do so if you wish.
But we are just discussing about the architecture and not the material what we are using, because we have not reached that point yet to decide that what material I'm going to use that outside. But architecture-wise, yes, that's going to be the one.
Thank you.
Lisa, has anyone signed up to speak?
A quick question to address, I think it was your question, Madam Mayor. Mr. Richardson, you would agree that seaward of the first line of vegetation is considered ocean beach in North Carolina?
Generally speaking, that's correct. I don't know that on that northern end, has it ever been the subject of government-funded renourishment? Do you know? I think generally speaking, anything above the mean high watermark to the toe, to the seaward toe of the first dune is public trust beach, even if it's owned privately. And based upon the surveys and Mr. Gandhi's application, on which he was given the KAMA Minor Development Permit, that area is not being disturbed so as to prevent public trust access in any manner on public trust beaches.
And I'll just read this for the record. This is from 7720-dash-E. "The natural indicators of the landward extent of the ocean beaches include, but are not limited to, the first line of stable natural vegetation, the toe of the frontal dune, and the storm trash line." So you agree that's an accurate statement of law, Mr. Rich?
Yes.
And those beaches are open to the public?
Oh, yeah.
May I think that addressed your question, or?
It was just concerning to see the property line extend beyond that.
It's all up and down the coast, though, believe it or not.
I understand, but it just, it does, it reassures me that we're not disturbing the public's enjoyment of the beach. I understand the rights and...
Well, frequently...
That's why this statute exists, in my opinion.
Frequently, property lines and deed descriptions, especially from old deed descriptions, went to the Atlantic Ocean, for instance. And those deeds may be appropriate for the meets and bounds, and the letoral property owner gets the benefit of accretion. And this is in the context of a non-government funded renourishment project. However, they, the private property rights are still subject to public trust rights from that seaward toe to the Atlantic Ocean. So you can't keep people off of that public trust area.
And that was just my concern. So I appreciate knowing that.
Might be a question for Brian, or it might be a question for Brady. Along those lines, not adverse possession, not an easement, but that would be a prescriptive right, would it not? The general public. I just don't want to put conditions on it. There's not a need to put conditions on it.
Well, no, no, there's no need to put a condition on it. It's impressed with the public trust rights. And actually, our courts have litigated that or adjudicated that. You can interfere if it's on the ocean beaches like that. So prescriptive easements has been advanced as an argument. Public trust rights has been advanced as an argument. It doesn't matter. The statute says what it says, and the Court of Appeals has affirmed that interpretation.
Mr. Reed's was one of the lawyers, along with myself, in a very, very back row way of the Emerald Isle case that established that unequivocally.
Good deal. Thank you, gentlemen.
I had air before that case.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Gandhi or Mr. Richardson?
And I would just reserve the right to, whenever Mr. Edwards gets back with his data points, if there's an issue or something that needs to be addressed, then I could come back up. I'm going to leave my stuff up here and hopefully keep it out of the way.
One question for Mr. Gandhi. Mr. Gandhi, have you talked to your neighbors about overflow parking and their, whether or not they would object to parking or not?
As Mr. Greedy has pointed out, you know, I also own 6955 Kingsland Drive for last 5 to 7 years. And if you have traveled to that road beyond, which is a private road, we write, no parking on the right side of the streets.
Okay.
So even though they are, most of them have been rented, nobody parks on that side, ma'am.
All right, so there are only parking on one side of that road?
Actually, most of the time, nobody parks. Whoever who else has been rented, they have been advised never to park on the streets.
I appreciate that reassurance. Do we need to investigate, counsel, about emergency access?
And parking as well. Both Chiefs Morrison and Chief Price, please.
That would require swearing in both chiefs. Chief Price still here?
I promise that the testimony given to Town Council during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Just a probably a quick question.
Good evening.
Good evening to you, sir. At the point that we're looking at this, these last six homes, it goes from being a public road to a private road.
That's correct.
I believe, having been back there about 50 times, there are no parking signs.
That's correct.
Are those town-installed no parking signs, or are those resident-installed no parking signs?
I would imagine, since that's private property, that the residents have had those signs installed.
Okay. If you were to have a police car, squad car go down there during the summer months, and you saw cars parked there, is that in violation of our town right-of-way parking policy?
No, it's not.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone from the fire department here?
I believe Chief Price is on his way, if we'll just give him a minute.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. Emergency access is in your client's best interest. Chief, could you please sworn in, please?
I promise that the testimony given to Town Council during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Chief, are you...
I tried. I tried.
Are you familiar with the private road at Kingsland?
Yes.
Are you aware of, or have a sense of, the width of that road? And if there were cars parked even on one side, is there sufficient width for a ladder truck to get through there?
So that is a loaded question. It really depends on how far off the roadway they're parked. With that area, depending on the way the geography is by the road, whether the sand, if they're going to be able to pull out far or not, if they, of course, if they park in the middle of the road, it could be difficult for any apparatus to get through there. Just as with people's private driveways, if their trees are overhanging and everything else, it can make things difficult. So I am familiar with it. We do have, I mean, we've got plenty of room as the road stands, but just as anything, if they park too much in the road, it would hinder a response. I don't know if that's the exact answer you were looking for, but it's the best one I've got.
I was asking for your professional opinion, and that's what, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
So, Mr. Gandhi, have your guests park well off the side of the road for your own safety.
Mark.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So I'm going to just stand here and let Mr. Edwards say what his data points are, and I don't know if I have any questions or not.
Okay. I did two things. I looked through the permitting system and was only able to locate two in the system because the system only goes back to permits issued January 1, 2016. Two of the houses were issued in 2000, well, one was issued in 2009 or something like that, we looked at, and the other one was 2016, but it was actually permitted in 2015, so it's not in that system. And I also went back and I looked at my notes from when I presented the condition of special use permit back in 2022. And on the data that I put together there, I had actually pulled tax record data as well. And so the numbers that Mr. Richardson has does match what my notes were from the SUP permit in 2022. However, when you go back and, when I went back and looked at the permitting system, those questions got aroused, arose, whatever about the Ocean 12, I can't read the address there, but the one that's going to be adjacent to Mr. Gandhi's house. And the tax records actually show, well, the tax records, that's Lot number 5, oh, yeah, Lot 5. Tax records say 5,278, but the permitting and the architect designs had 4,998 square feet. So there was a discrepancy there from the architect, but it's sealed set of architectural plans, and he's qualified to calculate heated square footage. So again, there's some loft areas in there or vaulted ceilings that they don't, that the appraiser doesn't know about. Lot 1 was the other one that I was able to locate. That, too, was in the system, and it was only 6 square feet off. The tax records say 4,992, and the permit for heated square foot was 4,998. And again, that was probably, and I don't have that file in front of me, that was probably, again, based off of architectural design, because all those properties had to be engineered in that area.
Thank you very much for that effort.
Mr. Edwards, I'd like to identify his data points from the 2022, plus what he just hand-wrote down collectively as Exhibit 4, if I may. If that's okay with you.
Since our staff, Madam Mayor, since our staff pulled that information, testified to it, I recommend we accept that in evidence.
Well, okay, no objection.
Four, ready?
I've obviously only got this one copy, but we can get that copy later if we need to. Any questions for me before I go grab a seat?
Any other questions for Mr. Richardson? Thank you very much. Mr. Reed's?
Anyone else signed up, mayor? If that's the case, unless there's any other questions. Mr. Richardson? Mr. Richardson, did you want to do a summation since you have the burden proof, or are you good?
Members of counsel, tonight, we've carried our burden by satisfying the technical requirements of your UDO for special use permits, both with respect to R7 as well as the supplemental regulations as laid out by Mr. Kirkland. You've heard from Ms. Courtney that we've also obtained our KAMA minor development permit, so for any concerns environmentally about the sensitive area, that should be satisfied as well, given that it's received the minor permit development, minor development permit. You've also heard from Mr. Edwards roughly confirming the square footages of lots 5, 3, 2, and 1, to the extent he has data on those that are in line with my client's desired special use permit to build a structure of 4,998 square feet. You've heard no one in opposition either to the KAMA minor development permit notifications or tonight to speak in opposition to Mr. Gandhi's application. And as you have heard from me previously, and I'm sure Mr., well, before I get into the law, Mr. Eads and I both have told you that we are in agreement with the public trust rights that apply to not only all public trust, all beaches of North Carolina, but specifically to the area in question on slide two of the council's agenda packet. And that area is also depicted on the KAMA minor development permit application and the surveys submitted by Mr. Gandhi in getting that approval that show that he is not prohibiting, blocking, or otherwise obstructing the public trust accessibility to the public trust beaches of North Carolina. As you know, given that we are in a quasi-judicial setting and the standards for the issuance of a special use permit, once we have met your town's ordinances for the technical specifications and the four general criteria, we've established our burden. You have already legislatively determined that the application that's before you tonight can be allowed in this district, so long as we satisfy your technical requirements in the four generals such as harmony and not jeopardizing the public's health, safety, and welfare. And you've heard from your two, your chief of police and fire chief as well, with respect to the parking issues or lack thereof with respect to Kingsland Drive. Obviously, there's also a public parking lot just on the other side, on the northern side of Kingsland Drive, which is where folks in the picture presumably park to get out to the beach that's shown on slide two. So based upon, among others, the PHG Asheville LLC versus City of Asheville case, we have carried our burden. And at this point, the law says that the town council should issue the special use permit to my client because there's been no evidence submitted that substantial material or competent to rebut what my client has carried in terms of his burden tonight before you. We thank you for your time, we thank you for your attention and for your thoughtful questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions before I sit down again.
Counsel? We're good. Thank you, Mr. Eads.
Thank you.
Could I close the evidentiary portion of the hearing?
Do I have a motion to close?
So move, Madam Mayor.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
Appropriate now for discussion or motion or both?
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit for address 6963 Kingsland Drive with the condition of exhibit one, if that's in agreement, which included a site plan, an architectural rendering, and the lighting specifications.
Second.
We can set it out, just the materials could change, but the ideas.
Didn't say material.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Discussion.
If I may, so when I think of the four criteria, the one that I struggle the most with is harmony. And harmony, I mean, good golly Moses, right? That is such a subjective term. But in harmony with the area, I look at the area a little bit more broadly maybe than some others. I don't just look at the adjacent property or two down, I look more broadly at the area. So to me, a home of 5,000 square feet, those requiring a special use permit, I do not believe these are in harmony with the area in which it's located. And I'm unable to support that.
Any other items of discussion?
Well, I think as officials bound by the law, we're required to set aside our own personal viewpoint. And when I look at this, the data submitted, three of the four resident properties are LLCs, then we know what they are. But they're legal, they're provided for in the law, and we're obligated to follow it. So I don't have to like it, I have to execute the law. That's my responsibility.
Any other points of discussion?
I'll follow up on what Councilman Bach said. I believe this property is in harmony, doggone it, with the rest of the properties that are out there. I asked specifically about the other five or six properties. Mr. Edwards went and got the square footage of the other, other properties that he could find. It's kind of hard to say the neighbor to the left is in harmony, but the new person's not in harmony when they're all the same square footage. And as Mr. Bach said, it doesn't give us an idea, or you can if you want to, or you should do this, or you can do this. The law says in 4.9.3.6 that we shall issue. So I think they have complied with the four criteria.
Any other points of discussion? Lisa, call the question.
Okay. Mayor President Bach?
Yes.
Counselman question?
No. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
No.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Gandhi. Beautiful home. Next on the agenda, we have presentations. The first is Moffitt and Nickel with an update on our beach renourishment projects. So Beth, is that you?
Welcome. Thanks so much, thanks so much, Madam Mayor and council members for inviting us today. This is in presentation mode. We're happy to be here. I am Beth Shadon. I am with the Raleigh Office of Moffitt and Nickel. I'm also here with our environmental lead, Don York, from the Wilmington office. Wanted to just show everyone our team. I am the project manager for both the long-term 50-year beach and inlet management plan as well as the upcoming beach nourishment project that will be constructed in the upcoming 24-25 year. Mark Prelo, some of you have met before, he's spoken to counsel as well, and this is the rest of our team that we wanted to share with you. This is the outline for my brief presentation. First, I'm planning on providing an overview of our 50-year beach and inlet management planning efforts. Then we'll delve into some of the components of the plan, which include the annual beach monitoring surveys, which we've just received the results of this year's survey, as well as the beach maintenance, which right now we're focused on the maintenance as part of the 24-25 beach nourishment project. I want to review some updates on our progress on the alternatives analysis for the 50-year plan, on inlet management alternatives for Lockwood Folly Inlet, including potential terminal groin alternatives, and then conclude with the next steps for each of those aspects of the, of the beach and inlet monitoring. So I know you've seen kind of multiple presentations previously about the framework. For people who are new, I just wanted to briefly summarize the goals of the plan. There's three primary goals. The first one is to develop a shoreline restoration program, and that will provide an equivalent level of storm protection across upland property along the town shoreline, and that will maintain our natural resources, recreational uses, which council has expressed such a support for, as well as the members of the town as well, and also protect the local federal and state tax bases. Another one of the key components is to develop an inlet management plan for Lockwood Folly Inlet to maximize beneficial use of material that's dredged from that inlet and the associated inlet Atlantic intercoastal waterway crossing and bend widener, as well as the mouth of the Eastern Channel, which has also been used previously to beneficially place material. Finally, this plan will facilitate our state and federal authorizations for the entire 50-year plan, which essentially means we would not have to go out and apply for specific permits for individual projects. The entire plan would be authorized. And so then when you do a beach nourishment project, that's just an event notification rather than a whole permitting process. So that will streamline the process of the maintenance piece of the inlet, I mean, beach and inlet management plan. So delving deeper into the shoreline restoration goal, there's two essential components of the shoreline restoration. The first is the annual beach monitoring. That tells the town, kind of what is the stay of the beach, what's gone on over the past year, have we gained or lost sand? We use that information when we're designing a beach nourishment project, and we also make decisions about, you know, is the project needed in the next year, is it needed in the next three years? This is valuable information that is critical, is gathered, like if the town is very fortunate, there's no storms, maybe that interval between projects can be extended and save some money for the town. This annual beach monitoring provides that critical piece of information. For the beach maintenance, right now, that's primarily beach nourishment. There's also something called nearshore placement that has been done previously by the Army Corps. That's where they'll be, if they're dredging Lockwood Folly Inlet, occasionally they'll dredge that material and take it over in front of, it's been done previously in front of the west end where there's erosion hotspot, and then that dredged material is deposited in the nearshore, so it kind of naturally can flow into the, into the nearshore area and provide supplemental sand for that hotspot area. Dune planting and stabilization's been done previously by the town. That's a critical component to maintaining those protective dunes. And then we are also evaluating the potential use of a structure or terminal groin at the west end where that erosion hotspot is. As I mentioned, we just have received our 2024 survey results hot off the press, and we have completed our preliminary analysis of those results. So I just wanted to briefly provide some key takeaways on that. This is a busy slide, but I'm just gonna tell you the key takeaways. The town is required to monitor volume changes, not only, not just, we don't just, at the time, the town is not only monitoring what's happening on Oak Island's beaches, but also we are, the town is required to monitor volume changes along Caswell Beach because the material from the previous two projects that built the protective dunes was taken from an area offshore of Caswell called Jaybird Shoals. And so the town is currently required to do that for three years. We've done it for two years, and there's one more year upcoming where that will be required. And we have found the results to indicate that Caswell Beach has not been shown to be adversely affected by that dredging process. So that's good news. There's no, currently not any type of mitigation and so forth required. So that's our first conclusion. I will say, as you all know, since you live here, that the beach has lost some material over the past year above the minus 12-foot contour, so the kind of active protective area. And the worst of it, as all of you probably know without looking at this graph, is on the west end. A lot of that material does remain kind of in the nearshore, but it's pretty deep, like around between the elevation 20, 25 feet. So that's not naturally going to be restored in the near term to that area. So that's an area, you know, that we're considering, of course, for the upcoming nourishment. We've used the monitoring data in our upcoming nourishment design, and we've also leveraged that data, the town has leveraged that data, and it has been shared with the Army Corps for their coastal storm, coastal storm, coastal risk, storm risk management, I think is what CSRM stands for, and their coastal storm, CSRM project. And also, they are doing, as you know from Bob Kiesler being here and speaking with counsel, they're going to be doing some beneficial use on behalf of the town towards the east side, and so they are also leveraging that survey data for their project as well. So this monitoring is a valuable component of the beach and inlet management planning. And as I mentioned, future monitoring will inform the planning for future projects. So the next component would be the beach maintenance. And as you all know, we are focusing on our upcoming beach nourishment project, 24-25 nourishment project. Just as a reminder, I know this graph has been shown before. Just as a reminder of kind of this process and how it has evolved, the post Issaïe beach profile essentially had no protective dune. Most of the upland infrastructure was considerably at risk for any subsequent storms. So in two phases, a protective dune was built in 2020, 2021, and then 2021, 2022, there were the two projects that constructed the protective dune. And what we're doing now with this project is constructing an advanced fill berm. That is essentially kind of your buffer to take the impacts of long-term erosion, and that is replenished in a, in a certain interval. Right now, we're operating under a potential six-year renourishment interval, so that the minimum protective dune that is there to protect the infrastructure is always there. And then this advanced fill berm is there to kind of protect over the timeframe in between the nourishment projects. So we are currently working on this, and we are working through a variety of the permitting and Bureau of Ocean Energy Management lease processes. Our borrow source for this project is significantly offshore, and it is in federal waters, so that entails a process in which the town requests a non-competitive negotiated agreement from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, or BOAM. Planning on submitting that request this week. We've been communicating and coordinating with BOAM throughout this entire process for more than a year now. We have already received the 401 Water Quality Certification from the state, so that is one thing you can check off our list. The Army Corps and the KAMA permit applications are in review, and Don York, our environmental lead, just heard from KAMA that that permit application is, is really close to being issued. The Army Corps permit will be issued later after that, and then we will work through the lease agreement process, which also requires federal consultations with different agencies, and those are kind of in process as we speak. As I mentioned, we've incorporated the 2024 monitoring survey into that final design, and we're developing the final bid advertisement drawings right now. So that's where we are on the nourishment project. Because we've had several questions and inquiries over the timeframe from different council members about potential solutions involving a terminal groin or structure, I wanted to highlight some of our preliminary results of the alternatives analysis in terms of the numerical modeling of inlet alternatives at Lockwood Folly Inlet. I'm just gonna give you a very high-level I'm just going to give you a very high-level overview of this. First, I want to mention that as a part of the beach and inlet management plan, this also entails development of a full environmental impact statement and a full alternatives analysis. There are a number of different things that we are considering, different things for the inlet, you know, doing what we're continually doing, different alternatives for aligning the channel, the depth of dredging, potentially building a terminal groin in two different places, two different lengths. We're looking at different alternatives for beach nourishment in turn, terms of how often that would need to be done, as well as what's very critical, where are we going to get the sand? We're also looking at considering dune planting and stabilization, continuing that, and potentially the terminal groin. So all kinds of things that we're looking at as part of the development of that environmental impact statement. So this is showing some of our numerical modeling grids. These are just four of the alternatives. We actually looked at around eight. These are four, just to highlight contrast. The first one is our business as usual, which is Army Corps dredging the channel along the natural configuration, some nearshore placement, as I mentioned, off the west end, some beach placement over here based on dredging of the intercoastal waterway. This alternative is just a realignment of the channel and making the channel deeper, hoping that it will stay more stable if it is deeper and more aligned. I should mention that there are, as you may know, there are some historic shipwrecks kind of here in the mouth of the inlet, so the position of the inlet channel is constrained, like dredging isn't really allowed at the location of those shipwrecks. So that's why it's not going straight out, because there's some shipwrecks right there. We also looked at the same channel deepening and realignment with two different terminal groins. One is just kind of west of the west end parking lot, and then the other one is further on, all the way to the west side, past the properties at Kings Lynn that we just looked at. So some results after a three-year model run, essentially what happens, and again, it's kind of hard to see from these colors, but what you see up at here is kind of what happens after three years if we keep doing what we're doing. In this case, the channel was kind of already oriented over towards Holden. In that case, it kind of keeps migrating a little bit over towards Holden, as it's been doing. Holden Beach did dredge it last summer, and then I think it has continued to kind of migrate over towards the Holden side again. The realignment and deepening only, what happens there is that now we kind of route the channel over towards Oak Island, and then it kind of continues to migrate towards Oak Island. If we have a shorter terminal groin, it kind of does the same thing, because there's nothing really blocking it here in the inlet mouth. But with the groin a little further to the west, kind of all the way to the west of those properties at Kings Lynn, whoops. We see that it does, actually, that helps to stabilize the channel in that deeper dredged position, and it does maintain, both of these do maintain, you see the red there, that means more, more sand stays there than in the business as usual. So more sand stays there in both of the terminal groin alternatives, but the inlet channel's more stable in the alternative where there's a longer groin towards the west end. I want to emphasize, these are some preliminary results, and we haven't fully done the total cost-benefit type analysis, but we do have some key takeaways just as a result of the modeling. Firstly, if we just kind of keep on doing what we're doing, if we dredge the inlet consistent with historical practices, that's not going to stabilize the inlet, we're going to keep having to do it. It's kind of a no-brainer, that's what's been happening. For a realigned channel that goes over towards Oak Island, if there's no terminal groin or anything like that, it will keep migrating toward Oak Island. That's happened in the past. If you go back and look at old aerial photos from like years ago, at times the inlet channels towards Oak Island, then it shifts over toward Holden, it's kind of a natural switching back and forth there. Again, as I mentioned, if there's a longer terminal groin, oops, all the way out there, we have more benefit that maintains that channel more stable, and then it maintains some additional sand along the west end. So again, this is a promising alternative, but we haven't completed all of the economic type evaluations to see whether the effort to construct and the expense to construct the terminal groin would kind of pay off in terms of stabilizing the inlet, reducing dredging, and maintaining some additional sand on the beach along the west end.
Bullet point number four, can you put that in layman's terms?
Okay, the updrift, oh, I should have mentioned that. Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention. So basically with a terminal groin, and if you have looked at any of the aerial photos or gone down to Ocean Isle Beach, you see this in action. So the updrift side of the terminal groin, so if the terminal groin is at the inlet, it will hold material here. And what, you know, generally, if this is, and again, I have two attorney, or I have at least one attorney in here knows this much better than I do, but I believe you are required to pre-fill a terminal groin, so that presumably there will be some bypassing as, as the sand moves west along here. But despite that fact, generally what will happen is that by stopping some of that natural sediment flow, the backside of the inlet where the term, the mouth of the inlet where the terminal groin, the west, where it's west of the terminal groin, it may see some erosion. And so that little area right there, that's currently, you know, currently there's a sort of like a small spit area in the inlet that may be negatively affected, and there may be some environmental requirements to mitigate that if, if that were to be constructed. Again, this is preliminary modeling results, so that would obviously require much more analysis, should a terminal groin alternative be elected.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. And so to summarize our next steps on each of these things, for the beach monitoring, we'll be developing a draft report to the town. We will also provide a draft memo regarding the Caswell Beach volume changes. And we also are required to coordinate with the Division of Coastal Management, as that's one of their permit requirements, to inform them of those results. On the beach maintenance, we're completing final design and bid documents, we're going to finalize the BoM lease agreement, receive our permits, advertise the bid, select a contractor, and go to construction. And then for the beach and inlet management plan, we're anticipating having the alternatives analysis engineering report this October. There is an ongoing study that the town's conducting physical monitoring of frying pan shoals, since frying pan shoals is a potential sediment source for the long term, although there are some additional environmental documentation that's going to be needed to, to utilize that sand. And so that's a contract with North Carolina State and UNC Wilmington, and they're going to be actually deploying current meters and sediment, I forget what they're called, like sediment traps, kind of to track sediment movement on the shoals. So that study, they're going to be deploying later, this month, the first deployment of that. So that will contribute to our long-term bar source development as well. And then, as always, we're doing a lot of agency coordination, and then Dawn's team will be developing the full draft EIS with all of the alternatives analysis for the 50-year plan. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Questions for Beth?
283,500 cubic yards lost last year. I know very little about sand re-nourishment, but that sure is alarming. Are we supposed to be alarmed?
I mean, the, the good news is, it's not like gone forever into the ether, it's still in the nearshore. And theoretically, it will eventually come back, but in the short term, I mean, you know, I was out, we, I haven't been out this visit, but I'd like to stop by, but I was out in January, and some of those homes on the west end, you know, at that point in time already were in sort of a dire position, and that is reflected in those data, I think.
That's my, my real question to you. We're talking about groins, possibly. It's my understanding the state has allocated five, and three have already been grabbed? Is that correct, or I just dreamed that?
Mr. Eats, you know the answer to this one. The, the terminal groin legislation, I think you're correct, that initially there were kind of five that were allocated, and that Ocean Isle Beach has constructed one, and I think there's maybe North Topsail, is that?
North Topsail is under review. There's six, I believe, and one.
Six.
They opted it to, they opted it to six.
Six now.
Bald head asked the state for another.
Seven?
Seven.
So with all, with all that being a reality, Beth, with all that being a reality, what are our chances, since we're not actively going after one, what is our chances of not being left behind?
I mean, it's a long process for any community, I think, that chooses to go down that path. I don't think you're, well, to my knowledge, I don't, I don't think the Oak Island is necessarily behind any other communities in looking at it. I mean, we are starting that process. And as you know, with the Army Corps study, the CSRM study, they'll also be looking at that, and we'll be sharing our, our study with them as well, so they can leverage that expenditure that the town has already undergone to contribute to their study as well.
So there's three out of seven taken.
Two more questions, please.
Yes, sir, of course.
We have submitted paperwork and permits and different things in one of your slides. Are we still on schedule for December of 2024, starting our major re-nourishment project?
I believe we are, yes. I mean, there are, I think, to my understanding, there's probably a minimum of 60 days. Dawn, help me if that's correct, if you want to, do you want to, I will let Dawn speak to this, since she is our environmental expert. Thank you, Dawn.
Yes, sir. So we are on track. Can't promise to December. There's obviously, as she mentioned, a long series of, of steps that we are progressing through. We have, as Beth mentioned, already received the Division of Water Resources 401 Water Quality Certificate. We also will be receiving this week the KAMA permit that should be issued. I spoke to Division of Coastal Management this morning, and they are finalizing that permit. So that's great news on the state front. We are working with BoM very closely, as council members and the mayor and staff know. We are in the final steps of addressing some of their comments on our environmental assessment document. Once they receive that information, they will do their NEPA review under their National Environmental Policy Act, and also walk through, their solicitor will go through and develop that review, and then we'll enter into the BoM lease agreement negotiations with the conditions. So again, with all of that said, we are still looking at several more months of agency coordination. But as Beth mentioned, as part of that, we are also continuing to work on finalizing the design plans, the specifications for the bid package. We've already conducted an industry day with potential contractors, and we are also doing a lot of outreach with contractors to get that interest, to make sure we have sufficient bids and proposals that come in. So we do anticipate going out for bid to receive those proposals in the next couple of months, while the continuation of the federal permit process continues in the background.
Thank you for your answer, and I'm the eternal optimist. So I read between the lines, you're peddling as fast as you can.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. One, one last question. You said the west end is in dire straits, or at least I say the west end is in dire straits. When people from the west end call me tomorrow and say that was an interesting discussion, when the discussion was over, how'd we leave it for the people on the west end? What can we tell them?
I mean, I will say, the, the Army Corps, which I didn't mention, but the Army Corps does have this year a dredging of the intercoastal waterway and the bend widener, and this is something that kind of alternates beneficial use placement between Holden and Oak Island. This year, it goes to Oak Island. That project is already out for bid, and they told us today that they were thinking on that they were going to award, when did they think, end of this month, I believe they said, that they would be awarding that. I don't, I mean, that's the whole intercoastal waterway, so I don't know exactly the timing on when that contractor would be doing that dredging of Lockwood Folly and placing on the west end. But that is some supplemental material that will be available. Hope, I mean, since they've already got that out for bid, I'm hopeful that that would be placed prior to our project, but I can't guarantee it. And, you know, we're continuing, and along with staff, to talk with the Army Corps and make sure we're apprised of kind of where they are on that as well.
Okay. Lastly, you, you came to give us a report, and you had no idea what people on this side of the table would ask you, so thank you for putting up with me.
Always happy to help. Thank you so much.
One last thing before you go.
Yes, sir.
So there's been a lot of discussion about terminal groins, and I'm hopeful that when your modeling is complete and you actually enter into cost-benefit analysis, we're going to get some numbers, because the numbers I'm operating with, that you gave us the last time, terminal groin would be on the order of $10 million.
I believe Ocean Isle Beaches, I actually just looked this up right before this meeting.
My point is a significant expenditure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, theirs was 11 million. So yes, sir.
Okay. So that's why that number sets in context that solution.
Yes, absolutely.
We will get that number.
Yes.
And we won't have to toss around 10, 15, 12, whatever it is.
Well, yes, we do have our professional estimators that will, I mean, it may not be like a construction estimate, but it'll be an estimate to the level where the alternatives analysis can be conducted. Yes, sir.
Are there generally federal grants available for groins?
Are there grants?
That I don't know the answer to. Are there grants available?
The other, the other that got groins, did they finance it themselves?
At one point, I believe there was statute prohibiting state funds from building.
Yeah, I believe that.
But not federal necessarily.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I'm not aware.
Yeah.
We can certainly look into that, but at this time.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Question on, on the large beach nourishment project, which, so thanks for your help with that, and to our interim town manager, Catherine, that has been a yeoman's effort on your part. So if that, if we're anticipating it's going to be a six-month project, right, end to end, give or take, November 1 to April 30, we have to be wrapped up by April 30?
At the longest.
Okay. So if we don't get the permits to start in November 1, but we get the permits that we could start in January 1, would we still do, as much as we can get done between January 1 and April 30?
Yes.
With that, your recommendation?
Yes, and, and I mean, and I think that would be a constraint on the contractor, that it would need to be done within that window. So they would need to put whatever effort and, and, you know, whatever, if they need multiple dredges, or whatever effort they need to do to conduct that under the time constraints, yes.
Yeah, and I would like to say that the 22 project, which was about a five-mile-long project, they were able to do it in two months. So just to give you an estimate of, of time, they work 24 hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick question. You likely won't have the answer for it, so maybe it's a comment. You mentioned that you've been listening to council, and you, so you've been going after this terminal groin, which we don't even know, we're going to get permitted for that. Two and a half years ago, this council asked you to look at the Netherlands, they're using this technique called rainbowing, and they're building artificial reefs near shore to disperse wave energy, which helps mitigate erosion. I've never seen a report from your firm on the rainbowing operation on the Netherlands, how they're progressing. I read an article recently, their project is progressing very well, and it's a huge success. And I think it's fairly affordable, because there's a deposit of waste material right offshore. You guys know, right, every time you pull up stuff and dredging, it's not suitable for beach nourishment, you go dump it offshore, crushed oyster shells, things like that. So that material is readily available and can be used to help disperse wave energy and mitigate erosion. But I've never seen a report. So I'm just reminding you that that was a request about two and a half years ago, and we, I've never seen anything, so.
Thanks for that. I'll try to get back with you on that, councilman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Next presentation is Oak Island Police Department accreditation from the NC League of Municipalities.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing? So, I'd like to thank the mayor and the, and the board for their time tonight in recognizing their police department for completing the law enforcement risk review. My name's Joseph Graziano. I'm the Public Safety Risk Management Consultant with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Some of you may be asking yourself, what is the risk review? The risk review is a law enforcement's comprehensive agency review of over 40 high liability areas to ensure the agency adheres to best practices and industry standards. Some of the areas include police pursuits, use of force, employment practices, training, and the list goes on. Steps in the process are an in-depth policy review that's done by the, the agency themselves to make sure their policies are in line with best practices. Then it's an onsite agency assessment that includes equipment, facility inspections, officer interviews, observations of daily operations, just kind of make sure that loop is closed, that the policies are actually being followed. So I'm proud to report that the Oak Island Police Department has completed this endeavor. And as you guys are probably aware, the league represents over 400 law enforcement agencies across the state. Out of those 400-plus, 200 have pledged to complete this process, and only 80 have completed it. So just kind of put that in, you know, how much and how much effort goes into completing this process. So, the chief and his staff prioritize this initiative. I want to thank their leadership and their willingness to participate in this initiative. They're very open, transparent, and receptive during this process. And I'm happy to report that your agency has shown dedication to the community by adhering to best practices and enhancing professional policing. So, chief? So the North Carolina League of Municipality recognizes the Oak Island Police Department for completing the law enforcement risk management review and proactively serving the community in a professional manner, while taking steps to minimize risks to our, to your citizens and officers. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I know, I know we're pushed for time, but I've got to make a couple of comments here, so, about this nice award. But first of all, I'd like to thank Joe and his staff for sticking with us over the past several years. This has been a long endeavor, where we have reached out to the league many times to, to reach our, the successful completion of the risk review. And I want to recognize Assistant Chief Frankie Cook and his leadership that pushed this project through. And what this does, you know, for us is, it provides us a foundation for professional policing, so we can better serve our community. And I'm very humbled and very proud that we have reached this milestone together as a team, and I appreciate the police department, from the assistant chief down their commitment to, to our community and serve in our community, and this is a demonstration of how we're doing that. So, I want to thank them, and I appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Chief, congratulations. That was a yeoman's effort. And I appreciate the initiative you've taken to work on that project. Auto Connect presentation from Mr. Varner is gonna be rescheduled for the fall to ensure that we have a full data set of the season, the entire season. So, rather than ask him to come twice, he will come in the fall, as he did last year, and give a full report on all the data that he's collected in his analysis, in terms of what all of that means and how we move forward. If council has specific questions you'd like to ask Mr. Varner, so he has the advantage of September and October to pull that data together, if you'd please send that. Lisa, can I ask you to collate that and forward that to Mr. Varner? I would hate to have him come, and we ask questions in the moment that he's not prepared to answer. And with that, adjustment and approval of the agenda. Does council have any agenda changes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to request that item 1.4 or 1.5 be pulled from the consent agenda and ask our manager to just comment briefly, because this is one of the central projects and our core focus for quite some time, has been public safety and crosswalks. So I don't want to bury it in consent. If you could speak to it briefly when we get there. And I'd also like to put item 5 V2 into consent, take it off the regular agenda. That's a routine adjustment.
Any objections, council, for those changes?
No objections.
May I comment? I'm happy to do so on those two items. They're budget amendments that would still need your vote and approval. I have included additional information in the administrative report with slides as well, because I thought those needed a visual for the public. So you could take it either way, but if it's approved in consent, I will still address it fully.
I thought you might enjoy two bites of the apple on this.
Fair enough.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, council. It's unanimous. Public comment. Again, we allow three minutes for comments. I usually let people finish their last thought when we approach that time, but, and we're two hours into the meeting with a fair amount of the agenda to go. So, Lisa, do we have anyone that signed up?
JT Marriott? Not here. Joyce Martin? And after that, just to alert, Melanie Morgan is after that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I am Joyce, Joyce Martin. I live at 129 Northwest 15th Street. I've been a resident of Oak Island for six years, and I have been disabled for, since 1920, since 2021. I have been before the council many times the last two and a half years to get ADA compliant beach accesses. I have spoken to the council members and had meetings with the town. I was told actions would be taken over the off-season, and we would have communication about progress. No action has been taken, and email and phone calls are not returned. My family rented a house on the beachfront near the Ocean Crest Pier for a week's vacation. I was not able to access the beach in my wheelchair because of the accesses near the house. I thought the pier had an access I could use, but they didn't. Can you imagine how I felt? I had to sit on the porch while my kids and grandkids enjoyed the beach. I was devastated and heartbroken. In June, I saw on the news on WWY when, that they started talking about handicap beach accesses at Oak Island. My husband, Andrew, and I found a nice, went out the next morning to check it out. I found a nice paved handicap parking lot and two mats that go up like Mount Everest, with a big drop-off at the end of the mats onto soft sand. We observed a lady struggle to help her 90-year-old grand, 90-year-old mother who walked on a rollator. She had to help her climb back on the mat from the beach. We also saw a family pull a beach wagon up the mat. When the mat stopped, the wagon fell over. This could have been someone in a wheelchair. These accesses are not handicapped accessible. I'm sure most of you never even think about people with disabilities not being able to get around. I admit, I was one of those people before, until three years ago, when it happened to me. Please take this seriously. I know all accesses cannot be ADA compliant, but, but if the town advertises non-handicap accesses, they should be safe for everyone to use. We need more handicapped accesses available on the west end of the island. We use 57th West because it is fairly, has a fairly good slope and, of the mat, and the parking is good. However, there is soft sand, and my husband has to push my wheelchair through that. Please extend the mats further on the beach to make it safe for the handicapped and the people that help them. I am part of a group of concerned citizens that reached out to Kevin Murphy with Ocean Cure. He's out of Carolina Beach. I also know he has met with the town and has offered to help Oak Island make our beaches exit ADA compliant. Please let Kevin and Ocean Cure help Oak Island become, become ADA compliant and show everyone this island really cares about everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, correct me, Catherine, we are working with Kevin?
Yes, I've met with him. Scott Thornhall, Public Works Director, and myself, met with him at several of the beach accesses where we thought it would be appropriate. Scott has already worked on some existing mats to get to the Mobi mats from the parking area to make that, make sure that is accessible. And Kevin's helping us get our permits through KAMA to be able to extend the Mobi mats at the far ends.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Swer. We've got it on it. Ms. Morgan?
And next, we would have Ann Shading.
Melanie Morgan, 4808 West Beach Drive. As you all know, I resigned from the planning board last week after Mr. Chulo and Ms. Carter both made code of ethics complaints against me.
Can we keep this on a, on a professional level?
I intend to do that. I also filed code of ethics complaints against the two of them. In their complaints against me, they both objected to the fact that I voiced an opposing opinion to theirs on the house size issue, and that I spoke up about fair housing discrimination concerns. The whole process has been secretive and shady. Who is the independent arbiter the complaints are being evaluated by? What are the results of that? Who has been included in the conversation? Certainly not me. Why was I not given an opportunity to respond? There has been no transparency here. Are board members held to a standard that council members themselves are not living up to? How much money has this cost the town? This is not Communist China. For the benefit of the remaining planning board members, who will be discussing the house size issue on Thursday, I'm asking that you convey loud and clear here tonight that planning board members can speak freely, whether in support or opposition, without fear of retaliation from council members. Otherwise, there's no point in having a planning board at all. Silence has consequences, and I will no longer be silent.
If I can respond to that, we have an ethics process that was voted on publicly by council and put into place. It is outlined as well in the documents that all board and council members sign. Complaints are not viewed by council, other than ancillary, and they go directly to an HR attorney at Mr. Ead's Partners. And we're waiting for Mr., I'm trying to think of Norwood's last name.
Bettr.
Yeah, his, his response. We will get a written response, and we're happy to share that when we receive it. So there's, there's no lack of transparency intentionally. We're waiting, waiting for that, that professional third-party response, as it's guaranteed in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Council report, oh, I'm sorry, one more. Ann, I'm sorry.
One more after that, too.
So fast. No, I'm sorry.
First, I want to congratulate and thank Catherine and her team, the entire Oak Island team, for getting us through the last week. The whole, the whole team was outrageous. I, I didn't go out a lot, but when I went out, I saw you guys around. I saw the white truck guys. I saw everybody, and I really want to thank you for everything you've done. I bet we've all noticed an improvement in the activities and the communication from the town. It's been awesome for me. It's the first time I've spoken so positively here. The staff is out there every day, improving the safety, the service, and the appearance of our town. We see and appreciate your efforts and progress. Thank you for keeping us informed and safe during Debbie. And a special thanks to all of the public safety agencies on Oak Island for working so hard to keep us safe, us and our visitors. Thank you. Catherine, thank you for your hard work and for your leadership, and thank you to all of your staff and your team. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Wendy Love?
She left.
She left, okay.
No, she's here. Wendy Lemons?
No.
Wendy Love.
Wendy Love.
Okay.
That's all I had signed up then.
Thank you. Council reports. Would you like to start, Mark?
Sure. I have no formal business to report tonight. I would just ask for you to continue to keep in your hearts and minds and prayers Israel and what that nation is going through and the suffering of those people. We continue to ask God to watch over and protect Israel, and we lift up them in prayer. Thank you.
So Mike Emery's got a 45-second video he's gonna queue up concerning the Par 3, which is near and dear to my heart. So, Mike, if you could pop that on.
Welcome to Oak Island Par 3 Golf Course, where fun meets the fairway. Our newly refurbished greens are waiting for you. No membership required. Play a round starting at just $11. Whether you're a seasoned pro or a complete beginner, Oak Island Par 3 is the perfect place to learn and perfect your short game. With a relaxed atmosphere and a family-friendly environment, it's a great way to spend quality time together. Enjoy a quick game that's perfect for any schedule. Come experience Oak Island Par 3, where golf is fun, affordable, and for everyone.
So, thank you, Hallie, for putting that together for us. That's pretty amazing. And then the Par 3's come a long way. So, we know, the Par 3 committee back in last summer, having gone to some meetings, they were failing, disarray, not very organized. And they've come to a point where they're like a well-oiled machine. We've got every monthly meeting. We've got somebody from staff, if not multiple people from staff, are there to support it. And as Ms. Adams mentioned, two months ago, on budget, golf fund revenues were up 127% over budgeted revenue and $200,000 over the prior year's revenue. So let me tell you, this team, they're pulling it all together. Your staff, amazing. Jonathan and Scott, Hallie, Mike Emery, and Catherine, starts at the top in your leadership. And I want to thank all of you, and let's just turn this, move it away from being a lost leader to something that comes close to breaking even. Thank you.
I want to add to your list. The committee is very active, and they also do a really great job in support of the staff that you just mentioned, so I don't want to leave them off the list. Bill?
No one has said it yet. I think all, all of us up here want to give a shout-out to the fire chief for such a great presentation for the community held right here this past month, telling people how to safeguard their homes against fires, what have you. While I was sitting watching that, I, I thought to myself, we need to have literature in the different rental houses, telling the renter. I mean, our local people kind of know how to charge their golf carts and stay off the dunes, and what the story is on paid parking. But so many tourists come here for one week, and they don't know. They just rent a golf cart, and they don't know they're supposed to unplug it every once in a while. I would like for us to look into literature in the, in the rental properties to help the fire chief on that. Mike Emery and I have, have been talking. I know he's already I know he's already started it. He's done one with the police chief. But I would like to see interviews on our Channel Eight communication. Interview the police chief, interview the fire chief, interview our town manager and let the people watch Channel Eight and see what's going on in our town. Communication's always key. I've been talking with a very sweet lady named Sue Stebbins. She and her cohorts go out to the Veterans Park almost on a daily basis, pick grass out of the flowers and take care of that area. Here's how it takes a village. She told me she wished they had concrete barriers around their flowers so people wouldn't step all over them. I went and told Margaret Johnson at the Environmental Committee about that and she said, "I have some of those bricks." I was talking to the mayor. So then Bryce Taylor from Stormwater said, "I'll go pick those bricks up and take them out there." And I was talking to the mayor and she said, "I have a whole lot of those bricks." I said, "Bryce, go to the mayor's house, pick them up." So, good things happen in paradise. We all work together. About the Environmental Advisory Committee, they've got a membership drive on, trying to get new members this fall. September 21st, from 4:30 to 6:00, they're doing a shoreline cleanup out of Veterans Park. So put that on your calendar and help those people. They're also going to start a, they're going back to the Smart Yard program. They're trying to do a whole lot of stuff. I meant to talk to the mayor before I brought this up, but I didn't get around to talking to her. Any group, special interest groups, families, anybody, so many people say we need a flagpole at Middleton Park. If somebody wants to come up with it, I'm sure we can talk Catherine into putting a plaque at the bottom of it. But I'd like to see a flagpole out at Middleton Park. Lastly, and I did check with the town manager on this one, ask if I could have permission to bring this up. May I ask you, Madam Town Manager, the story on the bathrooms that are locked that everybody's asking about? Please.
Do you want to respond now or in the administrative report? It's up to you.
I'm happy to address it, sure. We're very fortunate to purchase those two bathrooms. It is a bit of a process. The water and the sewer connections have been completed for both of them. We're just waiting on electricity. We're working with BEMC and their chosen contractor that comes out and does it. I'm happy to report that the boring will start this week and then the next they'll set the meter and then it will be ready. So it's in process. It's moving as fast as we can, but we're excited.
Back to pedaling as fast as you can. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
And those bathrooms are ADA compliant? Just to let you know. The porta-potties aren't necessarily, but these two bathrooms are.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items to bring before you tonight. One is a shout out to Scott Thornall and the Public Works Department. Couple months ago, I was contacted by a resident who said, "Have you seen the Commissioner's Observatory at the end of McGlamry Street at the beach?" And I honestly had to say, "No, I have not." And so I went down there and it was in significant disrepair, to the point that it was dangerous to walk on with loose boards and things like that. And so I reached out to the former manager and to Scott and Scott assured me that he would get it taken care of. And not too long ago, I got pictures from the resident saying, "Look, look, it's done. We have a new Commissioner's Observatory. It looks really nice. It looks safe." And so I want to thank staff for their efforts on that. Second thing is, is I just want to reiterate what we've already heard, and that is kudos to the manager and the mayor for the coordination, the leadership during Tropical Storm Debbie, for all of staff who worked so hard to make sure that we stayed as safe as possible. It's very encouraging to see the manager and the mayor working together, collaborating. So kudos to everyone on that.
Thank you.
At the risk of reiterating again, let me just add Mike Emery to the list. Obviously, it takes a team effort in weathering the storm. I think we all give a prayer of thanks. My garden's particularly happy about all the water, but I suspect some folks are not. But real-time information was readily available. It was accurate. As always, per normal, our staff was out and effective, visible, caring, knowledgeable. I could go down a long list of things, but suffice to say, we're making strides, as the lady said earlier. I've received a lot of complaints along the way in seven years, but lately I got some complaints about postal service. And then suddenly, my postal service went south, literally. So it turns out, as you probably have realized, I didn't for some reason, they are all outsourced routes. And the contractor had a dispute with the USPS and somebody was doubling up on my route. So if you're getting mail late, or not getting mail, or it's erratic, you need to go to Southport and complain to the postmaster. He is quite responsive and actually has a process where he can, on an emergency basis, rebid the route and get, provide for you better service. But if you don't complain, if you don't formally show up, you'll live with the delays in mail service. And that's the reason is they're outsourced and some of the contractors are outside of the state and it's problematic. So the other thing I've heard a lot about, it's almost a refrain, is golf carts and the many issues with them. I would like to ask that you give us, meaning council and management, the opportunity to take a long look at that once we get through the season, to see what can be done, what's reasonable, what's within reach. And I think there may be some things that we can work on that will ameliorate some of the problems that we have with golf carts. And I will take up my argument, I'll put that in quotes, with council about licensing and identifying who these vendors are, especially those who are not Oak Island residents and Oak Island businesses. And perhaps we can surmount some of those legal issues and that would also help us to get a handle on managing that problem. So we will take a look at that in the fall.
Thank you very much. As someone who was side by side with Catherine and staff during the hurricane, or I'm sorry, the tropical storm, I don't want to get ahead of myself. It was absolutely phenomenal. I've been through a couple of storms now with the town that I was pleased to see at the very first meeting. Our emergency operations plan was on the table and we paged through it to make sure that we hit all of the marks that we needed to. It was an absolute joy and a sure credit to our staff and their commitment and their passion to watch them work together so closely as a team, very seamlessly and collaboratively. And I take that a lot through Catherine Adams' leadership, but everyone stepped up. And with 15 inches of rain, it's very difficult when you live on an island at sea level, that we're not going to have water ponding and to the degree that it isn't passable. But our law enforcement officers kept everyone abreast of what those were and then Mike and staff posted those to a map that was readily available and updated multiple times a day. I mean, it was just, it was just a phenomenal effort. And everyone at the table at our emergency operations center were innovating on the fly and how can we make this better for staff. We also met with the rental agencies on some Zoom calls in the morning. They were very appreciative. Everyone has acknowledged the improvement in communication. I think that's largely the result of letting someone do what they do well and giving them that, paving that pathway for them. But I also want to highlight OKIinformation.gov. So this got a lot of play during the storm. I'd like to talk next week, perhaps, about ways that we can continue to promote that. There are a number of people that don't have access to all of the information from Town Hall, but I've seen tremendous improvements in the website. And rather than go to Nextdoor or Facebook for information, I'd like for everyone, while you're sitting in the doctor's office or, you know, walking your dogs or sitting on the beach, that your first place you go for information should be OKIinformation.gov. And then if you want to talk about the town, then you can go to Facebook and Nextdoor and lobby your complaints. But it, staff have just done an absolute tremendous job and I just want to echo everyone else's kudos for a job well done. The things that we learned during the storm have already begun to get applied for preparation. Hopefully, we don't see any more storms. I'll knock on wood. But if so, be assured that staff is already implementing the changes that people have identified. It's getting written into the document, the emergency operations response document, and we'll be well-prepared for whatever Mother Nature sends our way. And with that, I'll conclude and move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as?
As amended, Madam Mayor. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Lisa, or do you care to walk us through that, to say what we just approved?
Yes. The minutes, of course, which are the highlight of every agenda packet. We had a resolution to approve Municipal Accounting Services, Cybersecurity and Technical Assistance Memorandum of Agreement with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. This is a grant program that we can utilize to do a cybersecurity check at no cost to the town. We also have a revised fiscal policy from Ms. Adams, and that was just to bring that up to date. It was an eight-year-old policy and just needed some tweaking to bring it up to today's monetary amounts and all of that. Then we also had, nope, those two items were removed. We put onto the consent agenda, it was a revision to our parking ordinances, just a minor revision. When we implemented paid parking, we had many changes and this was one that should also have been done to make sure that the ordinances matched what we're doing with the contract.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Items removed from the consent agenda to you, Catherine.
Do we have a vote?
Or do we want to?
Yes, you approved it unanimously.
Yes. If I may ask, since you have additional material later, the two bites of the apple, but this one can be abridged.
The shortened version?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. These two items are budget ordinance amendments. The first one is for the much-awaited crosswalks along Beach Drive. We're anticipating six pedestrian crosswalks at a total of $110,000. So this is a budget amendment to begin this project and to take the money from our fund balance to allocate it for Beach Drive crosswalks. The second budget amendment is $276,875, again, for the long-awaited crosswalk at East Oak Island Drive at 51st Street. That one is funded by the NC DOT. They will reimburse us $224,768 and the town's portion of that will be $52,107.
Is that the one with the light?
The signal is at the 51st Street already. So it would just be crosswalks to add to it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Vote. Committee appointments.
Do we need a motion on these? Right. So I'll make a motion to approve item 1.4, the budget amendment for contracting engineering services for crosswalks and signals on Beach Drive.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve item 1.5, Budget Ordinance Amendment for Sidewalks and Pedestrian Signal on East Oak Island Drive.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Mark. Committee appointments. Yeah, I sometimes get lost in the agenda.
No worries.
So we have two candidates for appointments to the planning board. The applications are in the agenda packet on pages 70 to 72. Don't forget to sign your ballots, please, and we can pass them to the left.
Okay. We have votes from council members Kraft, Bach, and Martin for David Bradley. And we have, one, two, three. And we have votes from council members Kraft and Bach, Carter, and Chulo for Mark Spicer.
Excellent. So that's three to two and four to one. David, who's at home, and Mark, congratulations and thank you for your service. Consideration of Appointments to the Land Use Plan Update Steering Committee. So if those of you that are unfamiliar with what the Consolidated Land Use Plan is, is ultimately, it's the foundational document for how Oak Island intends to move forward. So this is done with a contractor. Weathers &amp; Ravenol is that contractor. And there will be a kickoff meeting, but the primary group that takes us through that is the Steering Committee. And appointments to, the steer committee has been in application process. The pages 73 to 97 show you who has applied for the Steering Committee. And then Weathers &amp; Ravenol identified a stakeholder, four stakeholder groups, put together around topics of, or areas of expertise. And those groups will meet once, but the Steering Committee will meet probably in a year-long process until all of that becomes summarized and given back to us in a recommendation. So there is an existing land use plan update that was done, John, in 2017?
Seventeen.
Through a very similar process. It's an arduous, it's a grueling process, but it's also very exciting to be able to plot Oak Island's future and what it will look like. And that is the foundation or the basis for our Unified Development Ordinance and also provides the foundation for Board of Adjustment decisions and appeals to the Board of Adjustment for exceptions to whatever it is they're asking for exceptions of. So I'm very excited to see a number of new names that have applied, names that we don't normally see in our conduction of business. And with that, Lisa, I'm going to turn this over to you to explain how we're going to move through this. So tonight, we will focus on the Steering Committee and follow at a later time with stakeholder groups.
Okay, so you're not going to pick the stakeholder groups tonight?
You can, you can go ahead and do that if you've got it organized. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I distributed two voting sheets. One of them is for the Steering Committee and that lists the members who applied. These are just for the two at-large citizen positions. Otherwise, the Steering Committee would have the mayor and manager as ex officio positions and then include the planning board chairman and vice chairman, chairman of the Recreation Advisory Board, chairman, or in this case, designee of the Environmental Advisory Board, and two council members who are to be determined as well. So the citizen at-large positions and the council member, if you wanted to vote that way, that is on one sheet. And then the second sheet has everyone who applied for one of the, one of four stakeholder groups. The description of each stakeholder group is included, as well as who the applicants
Lisa?
Yes, sir.
There are one, two, three, four, five, six, eight names for the Steering Committee and we're to vote for two.
Correct.
The six that do not get voted, can they be? The six that do not get voted, can they be considered for the other stakeholder?
Yes, that is entirely council's decision if you want to consider them for one of the stakeholders groups.
So some people, as you know, voted, I mean, submitted applications for, for both.
Some did not.
Right. So with their permission, there's an opportunity to reassign. And it's been suggested that we allow Weathers &amp; Ravenall to manage that process so that we have four to six members in each of those stakeholder groups. But if there are obvious ones tonight, I guess that you, that you want to include, we could probably do that. John's expressed an interest and focus on the steering committee.
Well, from where I'm sitting, per the charter of this process, Mrs. McCullough and Mr. Maxwell are going to be automatic appointments, correct? So, oops, they're just, they're listed here, but that's, they're both already pre-approved, correct?
Yes, they had submitted applications, so I didn't include their names on the list of applications.
Okay, so they're, they're pre-approved.
But their names are not on the tally, on the voting sheet.
I understand that, but just so everyone is clear that.
Right.
They are board and EAC reps. For definition. Okay. And there's one name you've not included, Lisa, because the application was late. I mean, I know we have it in the packet.
Yes, I didn't have, I'm sorry, I didn't have direction as to whether you wanted to consider that or not. Generally, we don't consider applications if they're late. But I did let Mr. Johnson know that I would submit it to you.
I appreciate that, but I think we should follow our policy.
Okay, so slight confusion on the stakeholders groups. So saying that we're going to let Weathers &amp; Ravenall handle that, that's confusing, right? Are they going to appoint? Or are they going to bring recommendations back to us so then we vote on those?
Well, I was dealing with the application that was late. If the stakeholders situation, I think we should appoint the steering committee and then have the steering committee meet with Weathers &amp; Ravenall and decide whether or not we need to populate the categories by specific expertise and experience, or whether we can populate the different categories based on who applied. I mean, I think there's some choices that they would have to make depending on what kind of information they're looking for. But I'm prepared to appoint several people who, there aren't, there are a couple of categories, but there are only one or two people who meet the current criteria. But if you would prefer to hold all of it off and give it to steering and Weathers &amp; Ravenall, I'm okay with that.
There are four or five names on the steering committee, and I get to vote for two. I would like to also honor the other two or three names that I did not vote for on the steering committee tonight and put them on a stakeholder meeting. We have all the names in front of us. I don't know why we're not appointing everything. And then we can go back to Weathers &amp; Ravenall and say, some groups have four, some groups have eight. What do you want to do about it?
I would support that. And then whoever is moved from the steering committee to a stakeholder, just go to them and say, would you be agreeable to serving on a stakeholder group?
Yeah.
Yeah, the stakeholder group. The one thing I'd ask council to consider, you may not have come prepared for this, but that we try to the best of our ability to populate the, both the steering committee and the stakeholder groups with a consideration of where they are geographically on, on the island so that we don't end up with all east residents on the eastern end of the island or the middle of the island or the west part of the island, that we have a fair representation. The west end, as you know, is kind of an entity unto itself, and I think that having that representation on any of these committees would be important.
Or, or the mainland as well, Madam Mayor.
Yes, in the same way. Off, off-island versus on-island, we, I was glad to see applications from the preserve and from South Harbor. So do you want to do the steering committee first?
Yes, that'd be the easy one.
Let's do that. Let's get that out of the way.
Steering committee and the two councilmembers.
Thank you again.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I totally messed it up.
It's B-O-B-C-Y.
Can I borrow your pen?
Mr. Tuohy needs a do-over.
Oh, my gosh. That's always so confusing.
Laugh about that, but I brought extras.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
He has one. Thank you. I don't want to lose that one.
No, he just needed a pen.
Is, the staff went on a separate sheet, Lisa? I'm sorry. Did you maybe want to take a break and I'll do this? Were you going to take a break? Sure, do you want them to finish voting? Staff?
Now, let's take a five-minute break.
Or do you, you do want to do the steering, the stakeholders groups? Is that what you wanted to do?
You can just not get out while we're here.
Yeah, give them all to me, and then you take your break.
Do away with stakeholder group number three because those two names also appear on number two and number four.
Seems like, though, if we're going to reassign folks who applied for the steering committee, we need to know who makes the steering committee and then who's left over to put on the stakeholders group.
Yeah, not a bad idea.
Lisa, thank you for the summary. Thank you for your patience while they worked through all the names.
Okay. So with tallying the votes for the steering committee, Steve Uhas has unanimous support. So he had five votes. And the next highest vote getter is Kevin Anas with three votes.
Steve Uhas.
For the councilmember positions, councilmember Kraft has four votes and councilmember Cartner has three votes, and those are the two highest vote getters.
Excellent. Thank you, and congratulations. Is Kevin here?
Stakeholders. Let's just say we leave out number three. I can't see the totals from number three. We can just work out one altogether.
Just decide where you want to.
Yes, and, and.
Also an obvious one, but with permission.
Number six, huh?
Yeah. Four, six is what was recommended.
Two, five, is that okay? Okay. Zero in two. Two, three, and.
You gotta love that stuff.
I do, I do. All right?
Yep. So this is, this is not about.
He's someone else.
Okay, good.
He should be in business. He's business man. Is he there? I think, he's in there.
Yeah, you got him down here.
Yeah, that's our recent thread. People know, know more than six.
Yeah, it was mentioned earlier, it was four to six in each one.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so shall we take a break?
No, Terry hadn't turned hers in yet.
Haven't turned mine in yet.
Yeah, we just turned her in.
Take a break, though, once Terry turns hers in and then lets you do all the counting.
Yes, sir.
We'll wait, we'll wait.
And there's not too much meeting left after that, so.
It's cold in here tonight.
Who is Kelly Germain?
Madam Mayor?
I have all the ballots now.
Need a break?
All right.
Want more?
I don't know. What does council want? Five minutes? All right, come back at 8:51. We are back from break, and Lisa, do you want to give us the results as you have them?
Do you want me to read out each stakeholders group and how the votes went, or how do you want me to handle that?
Whatever's best for you.
Would agree. Okay, well, let me start with stakeholders group one, then. So Ronnie Russell received three votes. Alan Slaba, Alan received four, four votes, and Sue received four votes. And then there was a write-in for Bruce Pitt, and he received one vote. But I will say Ronnie Russell received votes on other groups as well.
Do you just briefly touch on what the groups?
Yes. Group one is land planners, architects, landscape architects, engineers, surveyors, developers, realtors, home builders, associations, et cetera.
So how many? If Bruce accepts, how many does that give us in that group?
That would be four people in that group.
Okay.
Stakeholders two, which is appointed or citizen board representatives or, you know, areas of police and fire, et cetera, we have votes for, and again, some of these are one votes, some of these are three, votes for Ronnie Russell, one vote for him, Nancy McMurray, three votes, Sue Davidson, a write-in with two votes, and Mike Duffio, a write-in there with one vote.
Okay.
Stakeholders three, which is business groups, non-development or real estate-related, major employers, economic development, chamber of commerce, tourism, we have five votes for David, for Danny Bradley, three votes for Ronnie Russell, and one vote for Bruce Pitt.
Okay.
And then the last group is citizens groups, neighborhood activists, environmental groups or community leaders. We have three votes for Gail Baker, one vote for Danny Bradley, four votes for Kent Crocker, two votes for Mike Duffio, four votes for Phil Dudley, four votes for Heidi Argent, two votes for Delaney McDonald, two votes for Nancy McMurray, three votes for Sue Schweickert, and two votes for Bruce.
So I'm imagining that the top vote getters until we hit the number six, like in that last stakeholder group?
Okay.
But if someone has been nominated and they're in the top vote get for more than one category, can we ask you to call them and ask for their preference?
I don't want to speak for her, but I did have a conversation with Sue Schweickert, and she told me she was going to apply twice, which she did. But her primary interest was that, because she is an engineer, was in the stakeholder group one, but yes, that would be her choices to which one she wanted to serve in.
Well, Lisa can determine that.
So, guess I'm unsure of. So you have three people that got four votes in the last group. And then you have two people who got three votes, and then you have a tie for one, two, three, four people who got two votes.
Well, you've got six, so it was four to six, unless the council would give the latitude for an additional.
Four and three. Four got four and three got.
Oh, I thought three got four. Okay, so that's seven.
Seven.
Can we have seven in that stakeholder group? Anybody object?
No, I don't see any problem.
So you had three people that had four votes, two people that had three votes. You had four people that had two votes. So that gives you five with three and four votes.
Five of majority of council.
Okay. So we have the ability to add one if we choose?
So what does, what's council's pleasure? Like for the first group, you had one, two, three, four people get votes. One of them is Sue, who is now in the group four.
She prefers the engineers group, but if you don't mind calling them and affirming that.
Okay.
Like Bruce Pitt, he applied for the steering committee?
Yes, and he's in three groups in the stakeholders groups.
Okay.
So I don't.
So we'd have to just ask him what his preference is if he's a top vote getter?
So it sounds like we're not going to have an answer to this tonight. So do you want us, do you want staff to go ahead and give a list of the top vote getters and then reach out where there's someone who's in multiple groups and ask a preference and see if that naturally falls out into groups?
Okay.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
And then if there are any remaining positions, we can leave that to the steering committee? Is council okay with that?
I'm fine with that. I think that's, we need to talk to Weathers &amp; Ravenall about these groups. Several we've fully populated, some we haven't, and we may have to go back out and find more engineers and surveyors. That's something that's critical to them. And we have one person, hopefully we can move there, that's another one.
Somebody got zero or one vote, that kind of speaks volumes that.
Well, I, I assume the consultant was asking for specific data from people with experience and training. That's why, you know, so if we, we can meet that goal, that would be preferable.
Yeah.
And there's two councilmembers on the steering committee, so, and then Catherine and I is ex officio, so.
I thank both of you. I thank both of you for volunteering.
Good choices. Okay. Is that clear?
I think so.
As mud.
Thank you, and thank you for, um, picking up with that task. If you need help with any of that, let me know. Onto administrative reports.
Thank you. Thank you, this is a report of some of our highlights and improvements that we've been working on. I did it in a visual, because several of the items I think would be helpful to citizens to see it. First is, as I shared with you, we've been working on customer service. Been a top focus of ours, and a few of the successes so far we've been working on in customer service is improvement number one. As I shared with many of you, there is now a report a concern button. This is the front page of our website, the homepage. You can see the desktop view and the mobile view. Of the six main buttons, the far right is a new button called Report a Concern. We are encouraging citizens, I know it's hard to know everybody and staff and who to call for what. We're trying to streamline that and make it much easier for you, so that instead of calling these folks, we can get you quick, responsive, and accurate information if you report a concern. And we'd appreciate your eyes and ears as you're out there in the town, and you do see something. Report it and let us know, we're trying to take care of it quickly. The second customer service improvement we've been working on is your town hall experience. You'll notice a big difference if you come in during the day. As soon as you walk in, we have hired a new customer service employee at the front desk. Cindy Sales is here, if you all see her as well, please welcome her. We're lucky to have gotten her here from Wake Forest. She's also been in municipal work for quite some time in customer service, and is an accounting specialist. So she has a lot of skills to bring to the table downstairs, and she sits with a friendly voice, a smile on her face, and hopefully to be able to assist citizens and get you to the right place and get answers to your questions. The physical design of the whole area is in process as well, downstairs in the front, the customer service area. If you have come in, it's often not user-friendly. When you walk in, there's signs everywhere, you have to try to figure out where to go. One is back far left, if you're coming for permitting, the other is back far left for payments. We're gonna bring all of that up front, and focus the customer experience right in the middle. Big signs at the top, clearly marked where you go, and your windows, and your customer service person at the front. So this project will take some time, but we do hope to have that completed by the end of this fiscal year. But it's in process. The second one is, or the third one is the transparent, transparency improvement that I've been working on with our new financial system. It has taken a bit longer than I had hoped, but I will now be able to provide monthly budget reports. It'll be part of the packet, just like the other departments are required to do. It will be submitted every month in anticipation of these meetings, and it's a very graphical representation. I heard a lot of the council's concerns and suggestions to have it quick, easy, viewable, where we are with budget and our expenses, and same thing with revenue, our estimated revenue and our actuals. So this will be provided on a regular basis. Lot more detail, but again, for local governments and financial recommendations, one of the most important things they say to provide for your citizens is where you are with your budget and your actual meeting towards your budget, and percentage towards that goal. So I've combined all of the funds together. We usually focus very heavily on the general fund, but this is the larger picture of the town of Oak Island. So each month I'll provide the budget and expended, and the balance where we are in every fund, as well as the major categories of revenues. Just another improvement we've been working on. And as we discussed the two items earlier that were budget amendments, this is for our two significant crosswalk projects. Finally coming to fruition, still gonna take some time through the construction, but we've made strides. The first phase is northeast forty-sixth to northeast fifty-sixth. There'll be sidewalks on East Oak Island Drive with a crosswalk at fifty-first street. This is in process with NC DOT. They will be doing their review, and hopefully to have that done by the end of August. And then DOT will be entering the bid, and expected to bid it out in the fall. And then the contractor, whoever selected in that bid process, will have seventy-five days to complete. Same with the Beach Drive project, although that one will be completed much sooner. There are six solar-powered pedestrian crosswalks with cross signals anticipated on Beach Drive. And the survey work is in process, and we expect two more months to complete that after it's submitted to DOT, and we have that permit to construct. And we'll be doing the in-house installation, and that should take probably another month after that. So again, the target completion, though, for both of these is before next beach season. So we'll be doing a lot of the work over the winter. And this is the visual of where each of those are in the two budget amendments we just discussed. The green at the bottom on the Beach Drive, those are each of the six crosswalk access points planned. And up at the top right in the orange, you can see on East Oak Island Drive, where it's anticipated to have sidewalks from forty-sixth to fifty-sixth with the crosswalk at fifty-first. And that's all my updates, what we've been working on this month.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you.
I know you know the answer to this one. The crossover at Southeast Ninth, what's the status of that?
So both of those are in process, and if you recall, two of those crosswalks on Beach Drive were added to coincide with those two projects. So they are still in process, I'm gonna have Scott here to give you another latest update, but I'll be happy to report out on that next week.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, I'd love to see the changes, and can't wait to see the lobby, and, um, very, very exciting, positive steps forward.
Thank you.
Anything else for Catherine?
Thank you for the update.
I think, Madam Mayor, I think we skipped past for the committee appointments, we talked about with Ms. Morgan's voluntary resignation, about fast-tracking a posting and a vote for a planning board member in September?
Yes, I've advertised for that, it'll be in the newspaper tomorrow, and it's already on the website.
And what's our timeline on that, if you could?
Um, let me pull the website. Applications for that are due Wednesday, August twenty-eighth at noon. For a planning board position, we still have positions on the environmental advisory board. And then the first renewal or new members for the business advisory board will be in September as well, and those are all advertised.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
No problem.
So if you know anyone with planning experience, or has that inclination, urge them to apply, and the same with the environmental advisory board, advisory committee, sorry. We could use help there as well. Thank you for that. To all business, consideration of planning board requests to allow another month to provide recommendations on large houses. I have spoken to, John and I spoke today to David Bradley, the chair, and Carrie McCullough, the vice chair, to clarify what council has asked of them, and also alerted them that the opportunity for a second August meeting is the twentieth and twenty-first, or twenty-second, Lisa?
Whatever that Monday and Tuesday is.
The Monday, Tuesday, so twentieth and the twenty-first. But they're now well aware of what we're asking for, and the pros and cons, as John would say, is an analysis, not another opinion. So we really need the data based on the research that they would do in order to inform council's discussion and ultimate determinations. And I also want to point out in our discussion today that what comes forward may open the door for other questions that need to be answered before we can make a decision. So I just want to create an awareness for that as well. We'll see how that goes.
Madam Chair, did they indicate today if they've received all the information they asked for at the July meeting?
Carrie has crosswalked with the planning board's list, and what Matt has provided, and has emailed us, and Matt, and I think Catherine, you're probably CC'd on what is still missing. So that request would need to be filled quickly, so they can have that discussion on Thursday. If you don't have that email, let me know, and I'll send that forward. But they were ready to take up that mantle, they had already been doing their research based on what was expressed this afternoon. And they think that they'll be able to deliver the analysis that we've asked for by September, or by the end of August, so we can discuss in September. Anything, John, you want to add to that?
No, it would seem that they don't need an extension if they have a special meeting, if they have all the data. So I think we can stay this request right now, they certainly won't need a month if they have a meeting. If, in fact, the data's incomplete, which I don't know what the final status of that is, and if the meeting isn't productive, then they'll have to come back to us and ask for an extension. But they seemed eager to go forward, and they apparently have a lot of data that was transmitted from Matt. So I think we're in relatively good shape.
I will say that for the meeting on the twentieth and twenty-first, that.
Nineteenth or twentieth, sorry. I've looked at those dates, it's the nineteenth or twentieth.
Nineteenth and twentieth, thank you for that correction. That, and would you let David and Carrie know that that's, those are the available dates, please?
Okay.
Just, 'cause I told them incorrectly today.
So for the moment, I think we can table this pending a contingency which could rise again. I don't know what will happen when they dive into it, but it certainly don't appear to need another month, so.
They've got their marching edge.
The other thing that we alerted them to is that for the meeting on the nineteenth and twentieth, since it's near-term, that they may have to go with a quorum and not a full planning board. I know we struggle with that same thing, where we try to have everyone at the meeting, but there are times when you just have to go forward with the quorum. It doesn't mean those who aren't seated can't provide input, it just means they're not there for the sake of the discussion. On to new business, consideration of facade improvement grant program. Hallie, you've been incredibly patient, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Here tonight to present a proposal for a facade improvement grant program. So just an introduction, facade improvement grants are financial grants given to property owners or businesses to help improve the exterior of their buildings in a commercial district, focusing on their curb appeal. These grants aim to improve the visual appeal and support economic revitalization. Typically, these grants provide matching funds, covering a portion of the cost with the owner responsible for the rest. And this strategy was recommended in our twenty-seventeen conference of land use plan. It's in this picture here, where they specifically mention facade improvement grants. So for the funding, in our budget discussions earlier this year, you allocated fifty thousand dollars for the possibility of this program, so this is like the written details of the program. It would be a match of up to fifty percent of the improvement costs, with a grant range between two hundred and fifty minimum and a ten thousand maximum per project. It would be one application per property per year, and that's just to prevent a property owner where there are multiple tenants from taking the entire allocation for that year. The funding is available on a first-come, first-served basis aligning with the fiscal year. So if you choose to fund this program for the next year, it would start over again with the fiscal year. I will be managing the program in economic development with assistance from the planning department and development services. So that'll be a key part in that. Most of the workload would be with me, so it wouldn't be a too large of a workload on other departments. So the grant award process. The projects must be approved before any money is spent. This is just to save everyone from spending money that, oh, it didn't align with it, and we can't reimburse, reimburse it. So we want everything to be approved upfront, and it's based on actual documented costs. So any, any grant applicant will have to provide itemized receipts of any money spent in order to be reimbursed. It's paid upon project completion and approval, so depending on what the project is, if building needs to go and inspect it and get that done, that will have to be done before reimbursement. If planning or zoning have to go do their checks, that would have to be done before reimbursement. So the typical things they would go through in a project. Reimbursement provided after approval of work and submission of payment documentation. Again, they can't just hire their buddy and write up some invoice, it has to be itemized. They have to show pictures of the work that was done, and we'll verify that what they were awarded the grant for was done, and then that would be reimbursed. This is all typical in a way to kind of be good stewards of the money that is being granted. So eligible improvements, this is the part of this program that's a little different than normal. It's a little bit broader than most. So I'm recommending we include public art and decorative elements and landscaping enhancements as part of it. Those are not typically included in this kind of program, but because we're not a typical downtown corridor either, we don't have a historic district. So this thought was this would provide more solutions that our business owners here would be able to take advantage of. So that, that's the reason for including those solutions. But exterior painting and repainting, storefront cleaning, so even just pressure washing an entire building is something that could be included in this program. It would definitely make a difference, but it's, it's a big cost. And then landscaping and lighting, those are also things that could be done, outdoor seating in recreational areas as well. So there's a process that would need to be followed, so the pre-submitting meeting again is the time where they would come and pitch the idea, economic development, and someone from planning, and someone from development services will be in the room. So that's the time where we can say, oh, you're gonna have to think of this, you're gonna need to do this before any money is spent, so that everyone knows what they need to be doing. And then the application submittal will be when the project becomes official. So the first two steps are kind of like the planning play, planning stage of the process. And the first-come, first-served aspect of it will begin when the application is submitted. So then staff reviews it, that's just about, does it meet our UDO, does it meet our building safety? There's, there's no other arbitrary standards that are set, it's just, do they meet those two things? And. It's just, do they meet those two things and the application considerations? Then notification, work begins. If they need an extension of deadline or a modification, there's also a process for that. We said, and we set it at two months for work to begin, but if that needs to be modified, like say they can't get a contractor to start within that amount of time, there'll be a process to request that. And then staff final review and reimbursement is the final step. And this is just a summary of the program, but I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Let me ask you some, Hallie. Like if someone comes up and says, we were thinking about pressure washing our storefront this month, do they automatically, and it's going to be $500, do they automatically get $250? Or is there an instance where you say, pressure washing your storefront's nice, but we have better places we think that need to be beautified?
If they went through the process and again, on a first come, first served basis, had their, submitted their application, then they would be ordered that.
So, everybody that asks for money is going to get it?
Two bins, right?
You have to submit two quotes for each thing that you're asking for, and it will be up until that money is spent. If you, the other way to do it is to have, you know, a committee, a group of people that decide who get who, but that adds a lot of extra work and a lot more room for interpretation in that.
Let me ask this a different way. Do you have $50,000 in that fund?
Yes, sir.
And so, whoever asks for money, the staff review is going to say, you're first come, first served, you get it?
If they followed the process.
That frustrates me. Okay.
Hallie, just one question if I could, or just a recommendation.
Let me.
Under staff review, staff reviews application for completeness and adherence to town standards, including the UDO and the Building Code. Could we entertain the thought of removing town standards? It seems somewhat Big Brothers. If it's only, if we're only going to look at the UDO and North Carolina Building Code, removing town standards takes away anybody second guessing that somebody has to approve what the artwork is.
I'm open to that amendment, but I meant standards as how we use that phrase is the UDO and Building Code, but if that makes it clear, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if somebody has a pretty nice storefront, and they're not one of the problem area ISOs in Oak Island, but they're first come, first served, and they say, we want to put two benches in front of our store, your answer is going to be yes?
Correct. And my hope is that this is a successful program and we can continue to do this. In my experience in the past, I've worked with these programs, and lots of people say they would like to take advantage of it, but not everyone is willing to do the work to participate. So, setting up a lot of infrastructure to do a committee and have them decide adds a lot of unnecessary.
So, it has to be at least $250?
But the prettiest store in Oak Island, the nicest, newest store in Oak Island, whatever it is, they can come and say, we went to Lowe's and it cost $500 to buy some really nice benches, and we're first in line. We're going to give them $250 to buy $500 of benches.
That's how it is written, yes, sir.
And that's $50,000 of taxpayers' money.
Okay. It's voluntary. I don't think we can mandate or force a business owner or storefront to do any improvements to their property. It's their property. So, this is voluntary, first come, first served. So, I mean, I understand what you're, where you're trying to go, that you'd rather spend money on properties that you feel like may need improvement, but that's the property owner, it's voluntary, they don't have to...
I know we can't mandate people, but just giving away money. I was in Hazard, Kentucky when the flood of '67 came through. Everybody in town went down and said, FEMA, give me $10,000. And FEMA just handed everybody in town money because there was a flood, and some of the people didn't even have any damage to their house, but they were first in line, and that just frustrates me. I want to give it to the people that need it, and we can help them pretty up.
You know, I don't disagree with that. The issue that I see to Councilman Martin's point is that for somebody who may need $20,000 worth of work and we're willing to give them 10, they're not willing to spend 10 of their own money.
Right.
So, it has to be a willing participant, and if, you know, if creating seating out in front of their business, which encourages folks to hang out or, I don't know. I like the way you've set it up. I know you've put a lot of work into it, and I fully support it.
Thank you.
So, that $20,000 applicant has to pay $20,000 in order to get $10,000 back.
To get $10,000 back.
So, they've got to be willing to invest...
That's correct.
...their own money.
I don't have a problem with deserving paying their money upfront and getting the money back. Guess what we do with FEMA? We pay it upfront, we know it's coming. But just everybody that wants to stand in line, shucks.
Well, they have to be within our commercial district business owner or have the approval of the business owner, and that's really not such a high number. The other thing in this, it's just one approach of a lot that we're looking at. This is one incentive program, and you're getting this year $100,000 worth of improvement to our commercial district for only $50,000, which will ideally improve everyone and encourage people to keep up the improvements.
Well, first of all, kudos for picking up on something, as you noted in your preface, that was in the land use plan from 2017.
2017. Yeah, it's only taken seven years.
If I had a dollar for every time someone told me, oh, my God, what is wrong with your downtown? Fix it, right? Make it nicer, make it more attractive, more invite, you know, and on and on it goes. Nothing has been done. So, kudos to you. Per Councilman Kraft's concern, I think that what will have to evolve, I see this as a tiny little seed that you're planting, you know. At some point, you're going to have to have, in my view, guiding principles, you know, because you could have a flood of people and you're going to have to choose whether it's based on need, based on condition. But that, I think that will evolve. Let's see if anybody is willing to put up the money. And as you administer this for the first run, I think you'll see some things that you're going to need to put in there. And I know when you and I talked about guiding principles, one of the things that we hope that the current land use committee will take up is, how do you facilitate the revitalization of a downtown? And what kind of strategies do you have to have? And what, you know, what kind of principles would be in place? And that's a lot to ask. You're ready to go. We haven't, can I call it an experiment? I mean that in the most charitable sense of the word, but it is. And I would urge strict accounting, and let's see who applies, let's track it, and we may have to target it, we may have to delimit it, but right now, let's just launch it and we'll see where it goes. And then, Councilman Kraft hopefully will learn from that experience, especially if, you know, 200 owners show up day one, but I don't think that's happened.
I don't think that will happen either. Mark or Bob?
That's great. Nicely done. Great job.
Do I have a motion?
I have a couple of observations. I think it's a great concept. It doesn't address how long this improvement has to be maintained, and that's something just to think about. And there's, as I see it, I don't, I don't, as long as it meets one of these types of improvements, is there any, what if it's a god-awful neon type color that we don't want on the facade? Or, it's my job to think worst case.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I welcome it.
Because you don't want to be like, yeah, I just paid $5,000 to half of this lime green glowing, I mean, it's got to be code or whatever, but...
That's the standard.
Yes, so because we're not historic district, we don't have an overlay district, we don't have a design review board, we can't enforce some of those things. It's possible that we could set it up in the future if that's some road y'all would like to go down, but as far as like the color of something, we can't tell them that. And the issue about how long they have to maintain it, that is a common thing, that if that's something, I'm open to adding that in. The reason that I didn't is because in making this broader and including landscaping, I didn't know how to handle that, because if the plant dies, I don't know how in control that is of the...
Right.
...of the person. But maybe, maybe we could do something like over a dollar limit, it has to be maintained. I don't know.
But I mean, this is a pilot program, obviously. So, I'm just throwing this out there, and generally, the school of government suggests that these facade grants generally, you reciprocally get, the town gets an easement to the facade, meaning the town can maintain it. Now, that's historical district, like multi-million dollar programs that, just little things to think about. But, and then lastly, the way it reads, it says up to 50%. So, is it, you can do 5% or up to 50?
No, it's 50%, but sometimes with the receipts, like a penny off or something, like that's the only reason.
I just think it needs to be clear of the standard, because if someone goes, it needs to be clear that it's, the goal is 50%, if that's the intention.
Mm-hmm.
And then lastly, I know the first sentence says, "commercial districts." We don't have any residential at all in the commercial districts, do we?
We got the CR zone that does have some residential properties.
Commercial recreation, and I have that included on here.
There are private residences.
This is not applicable to residential, right?
No. That's what she's saying here.
Right.
No, but that's true. I have, it's meant just for commercial, but I have in here to define that, the CR zone.
Right.
So, if we, if you think I should add something that says excluding residential uses or something.
That's up to the council, but I mean, if that's the intention is to upgrade the business structures, if you don't spell it out, someone comes in and says, I have a residential structure in a commercial district, I want to paint my house, it's going to cost me $45,000. Give me half.
Not to exceed $10,000?
$10,000 max. They have to have two quotes, and we will take his suggestions or advisement.
I mean, I'm throwing out, those are all policy concerns or policy points, not necessarily legal points.
Part of running an experiment or starting something is that you don't have all of the answers, it's not fixed and final, you evolve, right? So, they're going to present a concept to you, right? I want to do this for $10,000. If it's absolutely disastrous or in some way damaging as opposed to improving the commercial district, you're not going to approve it, right?
As you said earlier, first come, first served, you'll approve it. Whoever asks for it, they get it. That's what you said.
If they meet our zoning and our building, if, other than that, I wouldn't consider...
You're not going to pick colors. I get that. But you're, I think at some point, what we're going to evolve is, what are the prin, what is it we're targeting? What is it we want to achieve? And you'll be able to narrow the focus a little bit. Right now, we're just trying to get people excited. The town is, for the first time, matching your effort to improve the business district. As we go forward, I think you'll discover what you need in terms of targeting that.
And I think too, if I may add, that the future of this program, if the pilot is successful, we hope so, that the next phase would be after the business corridor plan and study has been done by our Withers and Ravenel, and we do have clearer standards, and we can include that in next year's phase if this program continues.
Excellent point.
Did your group make a list of storefronts that you thought would probably be standing in line?
They, the, I don't know, have not mentioned that the Business Advisory Board reviewed this and voted to recommend it. And they looked at it and have talked to other businesses, and there are people that are interested. No one said, ooh, that business needs some work, but there are business owners that are interested in taking advantage of it.
But as you pointed out, there's a distance between, yes, I'm interested, and yes, I'm willing to do the work to launch.
I have found that.
Yes. I mean, we hear that for people that want to be on a committee or a board. I'm interested, but then the application never shows up, so. Any other questions, Council?
I have it on here.
Is there a motion on the table?
Would the motion be to adopt this policy and fund it?
No, we've already funded it.
I understand my colleagues' concerns, but I also am in agreement with Mr. Bach that this is a pilot program and we've allocated the money. Let's see how it works. We did the same thing with parking. We weren't sure about all the answers, but we started into it and then we refined it as we went. So, I'd make a motion to approve the facade improvement grant program as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Four to one.
We asked for it opposed.
Bill? Opposed? Yes. Opposed? Sorry, I didn't ask.
Thank you.
My apologies. And then you'll take the suggestions under advisement.
A commercial.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
You got to start somewhere.
Margaret, get rose bushes.
And I hope you didn't object, Hallie, to my answering, my jumping in on the concerns and clarifying. Next, under new business is consideration of revision to 2844 parentheses C of the town's Code of Ordinances for Parking. Ms. Lisa explained, this is...
That was in the consent.
Oh, that was in the consent agenda. I even have that note. I'm sorry. It's late. Consideration of resolution requesting a 35 mile an hour speed limit for beach drive and ocean drive year round. Do you want to explain that one, Catherine?
With the crosswalks, the six pedestrian crosswalks we just approved with the budget amendment, and the utmost concern for citizen and visitor safety crossing, the recommendation is to request from NCDOT to keep it at the 35 mile an hour all year round.
I know there were some concerns levied from the West End about travel from the Point all the way to Middleton or to the downtown area. And was that a recommendation or a requirement? I understood originally it was a requirement that we had to drop the speed limit.
It is not a requirement, to my knowledge. Do you know, Steve? I did not believe it was a requirement.
Okay. I may have misunderstood from Mr. Kelly.
Thought I heard requirement as well.
Well, the, I guess the issue is whether we add five minutes to somebody's travel time from the West End over the safety of our pedestrians as they attempt to cross beach drive is the major consideration. We have people blowing through stop signs through the town and hurriedly trying to get to wherever their destination is. Chief, do you have any input? Chief, do you have any input?
So, Mayor, to get back to your point about the 35 to 45, I think you're correct when Mr. Kelly did tell us that when we do install the crosswalks, that the speed limit can be reduced to 35 miles per hour. So I think you're correct in that assessment. And also, another consideration is the low speed vehicles from the 35 to 45, which would allow the LSVs, you know, on beach drive, the entire, the entire length of beach drive year round, if that's a 35 mile an hour zone. So that's something that, you know, council would take into consideration as well. So, and, and speaking of that, we have Alan Hancock, who is a DOT engineer out of Charlotte. We have been working on a project over the past few weeks. He's willing to come and address council on issues, you know, such, such as this right here, and give guidance, which he's been up assisting us with a project right now. So just for your information, that resource is available.
Have you ever had the speed trailer in the off season when it was 45 miles an hour? Have you ever collected any statistics?
I know, I know during season, we've had it on beach drive, near the Ocean Crest Pier. I don't recall us having it. I can go back, that's, it's online. Mr. Martin, I can go back and clarify and get that information. So I'm not sure if that, I just can't remember at this point whether we've had it off season on beach drive.
I mean, from my experience going to the Point in the off season, I would say vehicles, some vehicles are traveling significantly faster than 45 miles an hour on that stretch. So I think it's a safety concern. I would, you know, I would support reducing it to 35. I've always had concerns about 45 mile per hour speed limit on the beachfront. I just think that's a safety issue in general, regardless of, you know, golf carts and now with pedestrian crosswalks.
Right, right. No, I agree. I agree wholeheartedly about the safety issue or the safety aspect of it. You've got construction vehicles on each side of the road, and that road is narrow. It feels narrow as it is. You have the construction vehicles on each side, and even in the off season, beach drive is still congested. There's still a lot of traffic to be considered, and I think it would be, there's, there's a few things that we would need to talk through, but wholeheartedly, dropping that speed limit to 35 miles an hour would improve our safety, safety aspect of beach drive.
I think those who are speeding at 45 are going to speed at 35.
They likely will, but maybe we can slow them down a little bit.
Speed a little slower.
Right, speed a little slower, right. Yeah, and any, and, and you guys know this, any street in the United States, you're going to have speeding on it. You're going to have speeding on it, and when you have these short, narrow streets, you have a UPS truck, you have a large work truck that may be running the speed limit, but it appears that it's speeding because of a muffler, because of the size. So that, that's, you know, take that into consideration, you know, as well. But I'll find out that information. I'm sitting here hitting the rewind button, and I cannot remember if we had it, had the speed trailer there during the off season. Many other places, but not right now. Thanks.
Maybe Catherine or the town attorney can answer this, but. I would vote for anything that can get us crosswalks on beach drive and ocean drive, so I'd vote yes to anything as long as we can get that. And I've always wanted a speed limit at 35 on beach drive. But if you don't ask a crazy question, you don't get an answer. We could stop golf carts if we had a speed limit 36. Is that impossible?
Is it on a DOT ring?
That's been asked.
I mean, you have to ask a crazy question and get an answer.
I don't, I think it's extremely unlikely that you'll get the DOT to post a 36 mile an hour.
Well, I don't want to slow those people down. They move slow anyway.
And I can tell you, one of the objections from DOT about lowering a speed limit, they'll come out and do a speed study. And looking at the, looking at the speed limit, and then doing the study, let's say, for an example, you have a 35 mile an hour zone. Well, our average speed over three days is 28 miles an hour. So they're very reluctant about lowering the speed to make it artificially low because it's unenforceable. So you've got a speed limit that's 35, and your, your traffic is running at 28 miles an hour, and you want to lower the speed limit to 25, that's problematic, you know, for them. And they've actually done studies on Middleton because we've had residents to request that the speed limit be lowered there. And of course, speed studies have been done there numerous times.
It's interesting that it's a speed limit, so that's the top range of your speed, not considering people can go slower. So is there a motion to accept this resolution from counsel?
Need to pass it?
I'll make the motion to pass the resolution to reduce the speed limit on beach drive to 35 miles an hour year round.
I'll second that.
I guess that says ocean drive as well.
Ocean and beach.
Yeah, both of those.
We have to pass the resolution that is requested.
Bill seconded it?
He did.
Is there a, I'm sorry, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Good for us.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to go to closed session?
I'll make a motion to go to closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss specific personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 3 and 6.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. We're back from closed session. No action was taken. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.